All right, let's call this meeting to order at seven oh one, please. Welcome to the Scioto Township Board of Trustees meeting, December eighth, four twenty-five. Clerk Flintoff, please call the roll.
Carrie?
Present.
Jacob?
Present.
Flintoff, present. Brand?
Here.
Noel?
She is free.
Riser? Also present is township attorney Mariah Fink and office coordinator Christie.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, the way I am today from America, and to the Republic, where wishes fans, one nation under heaven, individual for the liberty and justice of our own.
Adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes?
For Flintoff? Um, yeah.
Um, yeah, I would like to take A eleven off the agenda. Uh, there's just some additional information I wanna consider before the board hearing it. K eleven?
Mm-hmm. So it's off consent.
That would be my motion.
Supervisor Carrie, I also have a couple of changes. Um, I request the removal of A seven off consent. Remove it indefinitely.
Oh, off the
Yeah, just take, pull and disqualify it off the agenda.
Okay.
And then I also would like to add the receipt of two FOIA appeals that I brought for the board. Where would you like, uh, those? Those can go on consent.
Okay.
And then if the board so chooses to put on consent, I also brought, um, open space and land preservation work session we held on May nineteenth. So if the board is agreeable to that date for that purpose, then can go on consent.
You know, the day of the week, it's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Right.
The regular schedule, Tuesday morning session.
Mm-hmm. Oh, okay, so.
Yeah.
Um, so K fourteen, remember that? Um, what was the date again?
May nineteen.
May nineteen.
Okay. Lucy Reed, did you?
Um, I think we've talked about this enough. Can we move N one to consent?
I would support that.
I, I would like to discuss.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss it.
Well, let's, um, if there's
I mean, otherwise I think we'll have a split vote on our entire consent agenda, which might not represent that.
Okay. What we have to talk about, that's fine.
So K seven was pulled. Correct?
That was the name, yes, with K eleven.
K eleven.
Also pulled.
Addition, K thirteen, FOIA appeal, and K fourteen, May nineteenth, LTC work session. Was there anything else?
No, no, they're fine. They went over here.
Okay. Um, is, oh. Lucy Riser, did you, or I heard somebody speak over here. Did you?
No.
I kinda wanted to talk about the
Sort of the nature of the FOIA request would be informative.
So we're gonna have a substantive discussion about it at some future meeting?
FOIA in general.
Yeah, that's it. Maybe not this as this, but FOIA.
Yeah, I mean, right now, the, it is the office coordinator and attorney who are, um, empowered to answer the appeals.
Okay. No, um, no, thank you. That was sufficient discussion. We're gonna stake it up at a future meeting, what, December, January kinda thing? Over TV.
Well, I, I'm not gonna propose it for December twenty-third. I would propose it for January.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah, I think it would be probably informative.
We wanna get out of December twenty-third meeting by midnight.
Think for yourself.
So, um, okay, are we, are we good?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
The board.
Okay. Um, let's do a roll call, please.
Okay, for our rules of order tonight, we're starting with Riser. Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brand?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Agenda adopted.
Okay. Uh, E, declaration of conflict. This is the time for board members to declare any real or perceived conflicts of interest related to items on the agenda. Oh, all right. Correspondence received, um, was that everything that you?
As of it, as of that date, yeah, we've gotten some through the last few days, which I'll add to the back end.
I used to have a chance. That is my special topic. A public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak to the board of trustees for up to five minutes on any matter. And we begin with anyone present. And please, um, Christie, the timer, please. At one minute, you'll have one minute. It will turn red. It's five minutes, but at the one-minute mark, it turns red and that gives you, um,
Countdown.
Yep, countdown.
Well, I'm Scioto Township president. Thank you, John, for suggesting at the last meeting that I stay after the meeting and shake hands with the board. It was both a success and a failure. I got a mu- much better read on where this FOIA board is heading. That's a form of success. The failures that I walked out of here with a lot less hope than I had before. Kathleen questioned my integrity. Kathy didn't like the spin I put on things. John, both you and Kathleen have used the word rhetoric about my public comments. I disagree with that. What you call rhetoric, I call reality. Kathleen, you have to work very hard to compare it by reporting how he is billing to the township and Jillian's attorney fees. In my opinion, Hathaway told me to manipulate the court to his advantage and undermine Jess at every opportunity, and that cost us a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Jillian is innocent of all charges and was refused help by the previous board when asked for it. She was left on her own, and it was only because of Steve and Mary Gillis stepped up to help her that she had more than a public defender. Comparing the two vastly different situations, using that comparison, questioned my integrity is a far stretch. Yes, Jillian's attorney fees are expensive, and they're expensive because the board refused to help her to help her when her own township ordinance said they must. When I addressed my comments to Hathaway for four years, years, you all thought I was the best thing ever. When I make similar comments about members of this board doing the exact same thing Hathaway was doing, doesn't look wrong. Putting a spin on issues and have no integrity. I'm sure this board and the residents of Scioto, I am the same person I have always been, and my comments are based on what I see at this board table and the behaviors and actions of this board. The people who have changed over the past year are the ones sitting on that side of the table. The irony of all of this is that Jillian is in the position she's in because she was Jessica's ally. If Jillian didn't support Jessica all those years, Hathaway never would have gone after her. So Jessica, is this how you repay the support you receive, while you were under nearly constant attack from Hathaway? Is it not enough that over the past year you have reduced the job of supervisor to the bare minimum? Haven't you already won? With all of the dirty tricks you've used over the past year, do you need to bankrupt Jillian and interfere with her defense so she goes to prison too? Speaking of dirty tricks, number twenty occurred yesterday at the LSA meeting. Jessica wants to remove Jillian as chair of LSA, saying she is cantankerous. Unnecessarily so. Jessica, I would say that you have been vicious and cruel to your colleague, and unnecessarily so. Once again, I had an opportunity to do your job for you all. While you were in closed sessions in the last two meetings, but Anna Kratzberg and I had a chance to have long conversations. One subject was the noise ordinance, one of the things we've been asking this board to do for years. Zero solutions being sought at the table. Lieutenant suggested we look at Yipsey Township. They got sick and tired of all the noise complaints and decided to do something about it. They wrote a noise ordinance with teeth so the deputies can write tickets when the cow does call to loud events. So no one on this board has brought a suggestion to the table. I'm happy to do your job for you and suggest you look at Yipsey Township and use their model to help craft Scioto's noise ordinance so people who have been tortured by their neighbors for fifteen years might finally get some relief. This is the kind of thing a board focused on serving the community would be doing. This board has been so distracted trying to destroy colleagues that you all forgot to do your jobs. Please get back on track and start paying attention to what residents need you to focus on.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. Hey, Kevin.
Good evening. Ben Jackson, living in Parkwood Condos, um, next to Preserve Number Nine. And reason why I'm speaking tonight, I wanted to speak two weeks ago, but I didn't wanna jinx anything. I didn't wanna have the sportscaster jinx and say thank you for something that had not yet been officially done. And so I'm back this week to say thank you because it is officially done. And I appreciate the hard work you guys do. It is not easy being a government official. You're never going to please anybody, really. I mean, if you please them this week, right, you can't please them the next week, but, uh, that's neither here nor there. But, uh, I just want to say thank you. Uh, I think that that corridor of calm on Z Road is going to be beneficial for the community going forward. It'll always be peaceful going through there. I'm looking forward to, uh, our representatives helping the township representatives get that place so you guys can come and hold maybe a fun phase of there, so. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Kevin.
Yep. So nice.
Yes. Anyone else present?
It's always nice to follow such a happy representative. Pat Stein, longtime resident and con- conscious taxpayer. Last week, our Scioto Township tax bill arrived in the mail. As usual, we will write a check for our payment of these taxes. What is not usual is our deep concern over just how much of our check will be put toward paying ongoing legal defense invoices. I have no doubt this concern is shared by many other taxpaying residents of Scioto Township. I am, of course, referring to the defense attorney invoices supervised to Carrie submitted for payment by Scioto Township. I believe the felony charges against supervisor Carrie should never have been brought forward, never have been brought forward, and the result of the vindictive behavior of our previous supervisor, Will Hathaway. I was present for the board's discussion on the invoices at the November twenty-fifth board meeting. I believe the defense attorneys are charging an unreasonable rate for the supervisor's defense. For that reason, I fully support the board's request that supervisor Carrie approach her attorneys and discuss a fee reduction. I supported that request two meetings ago, and I supported that request again when it was presented by the board last month. At this time, our township has received invoices totaling close to three hundred thousand dollars. These fees only cover the preliminary hearings, and we have no idea how much the trial will cost. I understand the prosecutor has offered multiple settlements, and not all offers meant the supervisor would have to plead guilty to reach a settlement. If this is the case, I don't understand the reluctance to settle. The supervisor would be able to move on, and the Scioto taxpayer would no longer have to shoulder the burden of exorbitant legal costs. We do know the current hourly rate is seven hundred fifty dollars an hour for one of the supervisor's attorneys and six hundred and fifty an hour for the other. What we don't know is how many times it will be necessary for both attorneys to be on the same call or at the same meeting at a total hourly rate of fourteen hundred dollars an hour. We do know there are no hearings or trials scheduled until next April. What we don't know is how many hours of prep work or phone calls will be made before that time, or how long the trial in April will last. Again, I fully support the board's request that the supervisor approach her legal team and discuss a fee reduction. A very reasonable request considering what I believe to be unreasonable hourly fees for legal services. The comments I just read to you were from a letter I sent to the board over the weekend. Supervisor Carrie, yesterday you responded to my letter and copied the board on your reply. You stated that my letter was inaccurate. It is accurate. It's very accurate, and I make that statement with confidence because everything I wrote came from this very room. My letter is based on what I gleaned from Scioto Township block meetings that I've either attended in person or on Zoom from the contents of the meeting packets and from Scioto meeting videos other than board meetings. Your letter implied that I was wrong because no one on the board ever requested that you approach your attorneys and ask for reduction in their hourly rate, and you suggested I provide evidence to back up my claim. I am not wrong, Supervisor Carrie. In addition to what I've heard on this point during discussions at the block meetings, I also read the Ann Arbor Independent coverage of the November twelfth block meeting. In that publication, your fans quoted you, Jillian. It reads, "Trustee Kathy Brand asked Carrie if she would be willing to speak to her lawyers concerning the fees charge. Supervisor Carrie replied that she would do so." You were gaslighting me. By your claim that I was wrong, for the third time in the last six months, you were gaslighting me over my comments. Repeatedly gaslighting a resident is not a good look for a supervisor, not a good look at all. Jillian, you need a good lawyer. Not necessarily an extremely expensive one, but a good one. As you're aware, your attorney's fees are extremely high. Paying high dollars does not guarantee high quality. Michael Bellato is a very good example of that. Something needs to be done with these high costs, and soon. I am very concerned about some areas of Scioto that require attention are going to suffer because of lack of funds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Anyone else present, like to speak? I think that's it. Proceed. Okay, uh, first up is Jonathan Greber. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Awesome. So, you know, Pat, you're a very nice person. I like you.
Jonathan, please direct your comments to the board.
All right, board, I like Pat, and she's a very nice person, but, uh, she's very wrong in this case. The township regulations very clearly say that they shall pay for the supervisor's, uh, legal costs. There's not a may. I know you changed that, but that's after the fact. And so by Michigan State law, you still shall pay her costs. I find it interesting that, um, that there's even an argument with that. The, um, the term shall is a legal term. It's not up for, uh, debate or for argument. Um, the cost of the attorneys, the, the attorney was initially, uh, Jillian, uh, came to you and asked for an attorney to be appointed, and, and the township said no. So she was forced to go out and get her own attorney, and, uh, one of the local residents who likes to now bash the supervisor recommended, uh, Michael Bellato and, uh, the other guy, Mark, both very good attorneys, uh, to, uh, represent her, and, uh, you know, she's dealing with two felonies that include jail time and fines. It's a pretty significant penalty for losing this case, so while residents may be concerned about cost, it's a little disingenuous when those same residents can, and, and board members can vote to buy a one-point-six-million-dollar HVAC system so we can prove how green we are by buying the most expensive possible HVAC system. You could have bought an HVAC system for a third the cost and saved hundreds of thousands of dollars, but there's this, this, this need for you to virtue signal and spend extra money so we can be more green. You're not consistent. You're not consistent with the law, and you're not consistent with your values. I watch you continually strip the supervisor of responsibilities. It's the same pattern. You wait for a problem. You don't try to solve it. And then you walk into the room and blame the supervisor and immediately vote to remove those responsibilities. I've watched it happen twenty times so far. It's all well documented. It'll all be shared with residents when the time comes. None of it's a mystery. Rob's been talking about it. Pam's been talking about it. It's really disheartening to watch a bunch of people who I supported, who I worked for, who I donated my time and my programming and website development for, turn on the supervisor and treat her with such disdain, disdain, uh, make up stories and make claims that are just, quite frankly, for your own power-grabbing reasons. Um, you, you, uh, clerk Flintoff, especially, have lied to me. You've lied to others. You've lied to the Ann Arbor Independent. And those lies are catching up with you. And they will hurt you in the long run, and it's just a shame that you and, and trustee Brandt have decided to behave this way. It's disgusting, quite frankly, and I wish you would try to be a little bit more kind to the people around you. It's what you ran on. It's that transparency that's gone that you promised. It's the kindness and the, um, sympathy, empathy that you ran on, and we're not seeing it. And it's sad. It's sad that so many people helped you get to this point, and you decided instead to use your power to attack others. Just really disgusting. I hope you can change.
Thanks, Jonathan. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comment? Please, being your zoom hand. There are no hands raised. Or me? What was that?
How many on Zoom?
Me?
Those are just people who are participating with public comments.
Okay. Um, now it's time for the board member's response. Anyway. Well, I have something to say. Um, Ms. Stein, thank you for your comments and your email. I do have to say that the November twelfth is when I did agree to speak to the attorneys, but before that, there is no record that I can find where the board requested of me to speak with the, the attorneys. I can't find it. I went through videos, uh, minutes, resolutions, motions. It's not there. That's why I invited you to show me. Yes, November twelfth, and I, I'm not disputing that. So I just wanna be clear. The other thing is, I am not going to discuss the strategy and what's going on behind the scenes regarding my case. What I'm going through is a nightmare, and you don't know what is going on. No, there is no, um, offer to settle. I don't know where you're getting that information from, but it's not going to happen. I am innocent. Anyway, I find it very interesting that if you were in my shoes, any of you were in my shoes, you would understand, and hopefully you will never be in my shoes. But I am just done with these conversations of the accusations and terrible attorneys. My attorneys are amazing. And yes, we have conversations happening. However, I'm not going to discuss it. This is between my attorneys and the township attorney. So if anybody wants to go back to the May thirteenth or any other meeting that had talked about legal fees, please show me where we had these discussions of ordering me to do something that wasn't written down. Okay, let's move on.
Um, I would like to make a comment, please. Um, Pat Stein, thank you for your comments. I will validate your information. I have stated and given evidence that in February of this year, myself, Ryan Yeaple, and Judy Monk, uh, presented a document to the supervisor to ask about how to contain these costs. That's verified. I, I, I don't think you should be vilified for stating those kind of facts. It's not appropriate for you to be taking this heat.
Thank you, trustee Brandt. Yeah, and thank you, trustee Brandt. No, you forced an MO on, an MOU on me from the township board in agreement with Jillian Carey. It never went to the board. Half the board members didn't even know about it or had seen it. And if you had, that means it's a round-robining, which is illegal. But no. You, in fact, you didn't even present it, trustee Brandt. It was Judy Monk that you had presented to me, just like you gave trustee, or treasurer Yeaple, um, the resolution to reduce my salary. That was a big shock. So, you know, don't, don't say that you're all, and, you know, great and everything, and you purposely attacked me over and over and over again. I'm just so disappointed in you. I voted for you. I even helped you with your campaign. No, I didn't. Um, anyways, so this is our board member response.
I would like to correct the record. I did not give, uh, treasurer Yeaple any resolutions. So
He said that in a meeting.
Anyway, I'm gonna just correct the record. I really don't wanna discuss this anymore. Thank you.
Me neither. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to approval of the minutes.
Yeah, and I just, I just wanna say, the reason why we approve the minutes here, it's a chance, we have draft minutes. We all vote with them. We correct them to make them accurate, and we vote on them. I would refer people to prior approved minutes and videos. Um, those are the most official, um, record of our decisions, which people can go back and reference as needed. I know Pat has done so.
And I have, I have also, over and over again, use of my time. Okay, is there, uh, any corrections for the minutes?
Age period. The board member response is to repair the wall outside the sheriff's substation.
Oh, apologies.
Yeah.
Thank you. Inside.
Inside the sheriff's substation.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I'm moving the minutes as, remember, or by Riser?
Okay, on favor, say aye. Uh, like, minutes are approved, seven zero. Trustee Riser?
At some point, uh, I, I'm remiss for not trying to accommodate, we have Dr. Stephen Wright in this hall.
Yes, we do.
And I don't know how long his presentation is or how far he's traveled from, but might we consider moving him up?
I could have told you in advance if you called me or texted me. His presentation is planned to be fifteen to twenty minutes, and then we will have the opportunity for board member questions.
Do we move him up in the agenda? Is it too late to let the guy?
I think we'll be doing it in ten, just a minute here, gentlemen.
All right.
We have consent, and then we have, um,
It's ten minutes, then it's ten minutes. My apologies.
Okay, consent agenda? Okay, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve as amended? So moved.
Or.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Consent agenda is adopted. All right, on to director's report for parks, preserves and pathways.
Welcome back to that during reports first.
Yeah, sure. I didn't even see the walkout. All right. Okay, supervisor. I don't remember the date. It was a Monday, nine o'clock or it was Tuesday. I signed up for the MIOSHA active shooter training. It was a three hour online class and it was very informative and I really feel that everyone at township hall should have active shooter training. And this was, hopefully we'll have it in person, but we have the HVAC system, but it was traumatic, but it was also informative because if you're not aware or present and you don't know what to do, that's when fatalities happen and within 10 minutes. Yeah, it was. I can't remember Dr. What his name was, but he did a very well presented presentation and he does not allow it to be recorded or shared that way. So you actually have to sign up and take it. And MIOSHA has other classes on behavioral sciences of just a whole series. So I recommend especially the board and even staff to go to the MIOSHA and sign up for the different classes. Anyway. Downtown Development Authority, do we have any? Well, they're still stuck with DDA.
By the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah. Treasurer Yeable?
Yes, so tax collection is going well. Both received their bills by and far. We identified a couple of the newer streets like Loom, Flume Court, Duck Lane, all that neighborhood. A lot of those sales just happened in the last one or two months. So we're forwarding on bills as we receive them back as people are moving into those houses. Timing wise, things got a little hairy. Seeing a lot of people pay cash, which is fascinating. I also attended the county Democratic Party holiday function this past weekend. There's all of our elected officials were there, a lot from the county, the state, as well as Debbie Dingell, JP Raskin, a senator from Maryland for House Rep, I believe. Yep, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Course Flintoff report about upcoming proposed agenda items. Thank you. Is that still for the end of the year group? Good for the end of the year.
No, I didn't provide this.
This is.
Yeah, so I was gonna provide a clerk report. Okay. Oh, no, you didn't. Okay, never mind. Okay. Yeah, so I just want to say we had a good audit this morning of elections. We got selected randomly again by the state this year as we did last year for precinct three from the special election of November 4th, 2025. We did both the AV ballots as well as the in-person ballots, so about 1,300. We hand counted them this morning. One question was actually pretty easy, David. But it took a minute, but all the procedures and we got good reviews again. So I want to thank deputy clerk Barb Calaja, all of the election inspectors. Everybody does an awesome job. So I want to thank people for their good work each and every election, particularly as we head into 2026. And again, we have the finance manager position open to support our new finance director Nikki Timmons, who's here tonight, as well as the three records clerks who will be temporary to do the digital records initiative, which we'll be launching as soon as we get the HVAC done. But we're getting the technology in place. We have weekly meetings with our IT consultant. I get all of those.
Parks, paths and preserves. Director Arrington, are you ready? And we'll just fit you in to these other reports.
I will keep it as brief as I can. I wanted to go through some of the things that I highlighted in my last report and then catch you up on where we're at now. And then just talk about some of the other things that have happened since then. We're near completing phase two of Township Hall Park Playground. All that's left is the sodding of the hill and the installation of the two neck climbers. We got it in. They were really poor quality. So our contractors on our behalf took them back and working on getting something that's of better quality and is safer, which was their biggest concern is they didn't think of it safety standards. As usual, they've been a pleasure to work with, so I'm excited to work with them in 2026 to finish the playground project once and for all. And then we're just gonna focus on other projects there. The parks and I attended the virtual vernal pool patrol wrap-up meeting and our team played a really big part in increasing data collection in Washington County, which they did mention during that meeting. So it was really exciting to hear that you've been helping increase awareness about vernal pools. And then depending on how the vote tonight goes, hopefully we'll be creating a series on vernal pools that one of our staff members will be able to create and develop and execute on our behalf. We performed the second prescribed fire in November out at Five Oaks Preserve. It went really well. We had the consultant out there a few months before the burn. And he was like, I don't know. You do stuff like this doesn't burn very well, but it ended up being awesome. And then the next day we got like a snowy rain, which is the perfect conditions to reseed. So in the spring, we're probably going to have some pretty cool results. It's nice to see progress. I know the end of data collection season has passed due to presentations at the other board meeting. But one notable thing is that we were able to submit our data to the Michigan Bluebird Society, who did give us their grant of nest boxes. So it's important that we keep the connection going with them. So they're very appreciative of that. We're making progress towards removal of invasive species. As usual, it's gonna, as you know, be the longest project inside of township history, most likely, but we are chipping away at it. If you go out to Dan Curler towards the fair inside, you'll see that the staff has been making huge progress out there. Like a completely different place. It's very cool. And 2026, we're going to be working with Orbis Environmental, continuing to work with them to get our FQAs completed. And then they're going to help us with their management recommendations, their unit recommendations, and then help us create our management plans, like our long-term management plans for each preserve and park. Unfortunately, the number of properties that we have, which is also good, keeps growing. So we're gonna have to figure out how to incorporate these newer properties into that that we already signed a contract for. But they're, they're really nice to work with, so it shouldn't be too much of a problem. We're continuing to work towards our Bird City application. Oh, I meant to bring copies of that, but I'll email it to you once I sit back down. But we've been able to compile all of our activities within the township. So not just board activities, but activities from other committees that have actually helped us to qualify. So we're most likely going to get the Bird City designation once we get all the documentation to back up all those planes and we've met the items, the action items. Okay, I'm almost done, I swear. We recently partnered with Eastern Michigan University's Conservation Biology Class. We had a group of three students who we formed just like a mutual beneficial project where they came out and did some invasive species identification and then tracking within our GIS software. So they get the experience and then we get the work and it also helps raise awareness of our parks and preserves to a community that is a little bit removed so that hopefully we can bring some more awareness to our, our parks from IPSE. We'll also be working with Katie Greenwald at EMU to genotype our salamander populations, our special concern salamander populations, so that we can get recommendations on best practices for management moving forward. She's most likely gonna have a grad student do that. So it's, we're not gonna be like, there'll be no fiscal impact. It'll just be, again, mutually beneficial for both parties. I worked with Brandon and Christie to get Peer List Midwest back after about 11 years because there was an incomplete project at a township hall park where they never cut the wells below ground.
Oh, yeah.
We discovered that through the county a few months ago and Brandon got right on it and was like, hey, you guys need to come out. And then they did. So I was finally done. It's actually one of the first things that the committee brought up to me when I started working here. So glad to see that through. We were planning to go out for bids soon for the zebra pathway. That's temporarily on hold. Not sure how much I'm allowed to say about that, but it is on hold in case you didn't know. And as you know, the contract for wild type nursery was on the consent agenda. So we'll be sending that to them tomorrow, hopefully, to get all of our trees and shrubs grown for our first pre-forestation project. It's so cool. And that guy is awesome to work with. The whole organization is awesome. So it's nice to say that we've been working really diligently on invasive tree and shrub removal since the seasons changed and that's pretty much all the staff is gonna be doing through December 31st. Lots of things that I want to make progress on, such as planning all of our events for 2026, finding all of our volunteer workdays and then actually getting that information out at the beginning of the year so that more people have a chance to get exposed to it. But again, some of this stuff is just dependent on how tonight goes. So looking forward to 2026. Any questions?
Any questions? I just have a small question.
Yes.
I like the bird, the dots on the windows, birds. Are, is it the proposal to put that on more of township hall or is it just certain with windows that face certain directions?
It was windows that we've had an increase in bird strikes. So it'll be these windows, which we won't be able to put them up until it becomes 55 degrees consistently again. Surprise those ones actually stayed on. But we'll be doing the meeting hall and then the two kitchens are where we're finding bird strikes to occur. So. I'm really excited that we need to do this because I've, I've worked for organizations where I've made them aware increasing bird strikes and it's uncommon for people to take it as seriously. So I really do appreciate it.
We have to have so many because if you look at it, it makes you sick. I know. I try to look through it. It's.
There is.
That's why the turds bird.
Yeah, I guess so.
Which is to just actually implement bird safe glass that has like a UV reflection that only the birds can see. So in the future, we should totally consider just moving to a bird safe glass. So we don't have to look at those dots or try to look through them.
Is that something the fire chief is aware of?
The glass? I would have to ask.
Maybe you could. Why don't you just mention it to him?
For the new fire station.
I have no idea how much it costs. I'm not saying I support it. I'm just saying we should look into it. Okay.
That's our cheaper.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Murphy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Murphy. Planning Commission.
Yes, the planning commission started aggressively working on a data center ordinance.
Thank you.
Very pleased with her consultant bringing that forward. And we do understand the urgency, so let me try to push that along. And I got nominated to be on a subcommittee to research that topic with Jan Culbertson. So that I carry that knowledge back to the board.
Thank you.
Great.
Do you read LPC?
We need Thursday.
It's your report. On the 23rd then. Sustainability task force. We don't have anybody from the board.
Let's sub, sub to PC.
Okay. Gellman?
We had the quarterly meeting with Eagle on Tuesday. And it was a routine meeting, basically. One of the issues that did come up was the Piper Ridge conditional rezoning issue. And there are four dioxide monitoring wells on the Piper Ridge site. Two or three of them have been at non-detect for many years. But one of them does show a significant amount of dioxide contamination above our drinking water standard. So the developer had represented that they were gonna just abandon the wells. And there was significant discussion during the card meeting about that was not the appropriate action until we had Eagle's authority and Gellman is gonna have to be involved in the decision-making too. It's gonna be a long, complicated decision-making process. So Eagle has ultimate regulatory authority over these wells. And which ones can be abandoned or capped? You don't just abandon them. They have to be capped. And then, so it's an evolving situation. Mariah's aware. Mariah and I have discussed it. Laura Krips and I have discussed it. It's evolving situation. Thank you.
The well that is detected, I suppose. Is there, is it maintaining a certain level? Is it going up?
It's going up and down.
Sorry?
It's going up and down. But no, they, sometimes they do. It's kind of, it's not like that there's a gradual increase up and then a gradual increase down. There's, with some of them, some variation. So I don't know how, it can be relocated also. So that's under consideration with Eagle.
The monitoring well can be.
Yes, it can be relocated.
How many wells are in the area for monitoring or have they been shut down and then?
Well, this is just on the Piper Ridge parcel site, four.
It would. Would that be well, I'm sorry, would that be sewer and, and water? Yeah, municipal, water and sewer or no?
Wait, this Piper Ridge would go on municipal water and sewer.
Okay.
These wells are drinking water, then excuse me, they're monitor dioxide monitoring wells.
It's a water table.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Now I'm clear. So it's vacant land on which, if developed, would be municipal water sewer.
Yes.
But it's likely that at least on one of the locations, there is a variable a varying level of dioxide detected via monitoring well. Okay, thank you.
Let's see. Multimodal transit committee.
Yep, we met on December 4th for about an hour and a half. And we have another meeting on December the 8th, so a week from Thursday. We formed the service provider partners, I suppose, that they do not need to attend. It's just gonna be a discussion between the members of the committee. And I also shared out these, township of Pittsfield recently got rid of A-Ride and they're switching to having People's Express provide A-Ride service, which is the accessible service. So I'm trying to gather some more information from Pittsfield Township to learn about what cost savings, if any, they received or if there's delivery differences or what other information they have about the choice they made behind that, any of the financial impacts.
At the last supervisor, county supervisor meeting, they invited People's Express, WAVE and Jewish Family Services. People's Express doesn't come up this far at the, at that, at this point, maybe in the future. But the other two are available for, yeah.
And one of the things we looked at or talked about at the meeting was, you know, WAVE has provided some cost savings ideas, ways they can still provide service in a more innovative or flexible manner. In our area of transit, agency has not been necessarily as flexible. So just seeing if maybe, there, there's pros and cons because some of the funding is passed or from Ada down to WAVE and there's a lot of complexity around it, but just seeing what service. But just seeing what services maybe we could contract more with one over the other and with the cost impact might.
Great, well, thank you. Roads Advisory Committee, we met last week and we, and I can't even remember, it's been yeah, it's been a long week, I had a family crisis over the weekend, which I'm not going to share. But, um, anyways, the next meeting, uh, we're just working on projects and moving forward. Um, Office Coordinator, Christie, do you have anything?
Um, I just wanted to remind the board and the committees of our holiday luncheon on the eighteenth here in Meeting Hall. Uh, Jan Culberson has offered to provide all of the paper, no, yeah, paper products and utensils that will be able to go into the food compost container, so thank you, Jan, for that, she's coming a little early, she's got tablecloths and everything.
So this is a zero waste event?
Uh, zero waste event is the intention, so yes, that's, that's the plan. And also, I do have coffee and, and disposable cups for anybody who may want coffee during the meeting.
Oh.
It's a Keurig, so you gotta put the water in the back, but.
Thank you.
Help yourself. I did, I grabbed it cuz when we had it the one night, it did smell pretty good and I thought that's, that's nice to have when people want a cup of coffee, but it's late.
Is Jan still bringing her lasagna?
She can't.
I don't know, but.
She made a killer vegetarian lasagna.
Really good.
And, um.
Eighteenth at noon.
Eighteenth at noon and I, Cheryl McGuire, our recording secretary, I'm going to email you, but if you hear this first, you're invited too.
Yeah.
Okay, Cheryl. That's it, thanks, everybody.
Are you coordinating a list for things that?
It doesn't usually work out very well, I've tried it every year, different ways. Um, I'll just say out, OHM always brings the ham, we know, and Carlisle provides the chicken, so that's, and then everyone brings a dish to pass. So whatever you're, you feel like bringing, we usually have plenty of dessert and plenty of other side dishes, as everybody knows, so. And usually someone will bring a couple of two liters and pop and, but, yeah. It's not very well thought out as far as what people are bringing, but it works out, it's fun, it's a pop lock, so.
Also included are the Utility Director Monthly Report and the Placing Report from Carlisle. There he is. Uh, okay. Oh. Now, um, presentation by Dr. Stephen Wright, PhD. And I can. You wanna turn it up?
I'm gonna give a brief introduction.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Stephen Wright is serving as a consultant to the township on the proposed community level. It's been proposed on the forty-five acre Lutton parcel that is currently in Scioto Township. But Dexter, Dexter has expressed an interest in annexing. Dr. Wright is an emeritus professor at the University of Michigan in Civil and Environmental Engineering. CV is included in our packet. He has done extensive consulting in groundwater hydrology throughout the state of Michigan and nationally. He has taught numerous hydrology courses at the university.
Thank you for being here.
Ready to go.
Okay. Everything okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Very good, so, um, I've been working on this, I guess, since about the beginning of October, more or less, and keep, um, uh, digging into more and more things as I go along and and by now, I've come to a reasonably good understanding of the situation, so. Just, um, a little bit of background, uh, there, uh, there is a large property that was called Slums Kingly and a small portion of that in section eight, which is just immediately below the Dexter Crossing. Um, uh, uh, subdivision is, uh, being proposed to develop with a production well in the very northeast corner of that forty-five acre, uh, parcels. So that's right back in the middle of the section eight there. The city of Dexter is obviously interested in this because they have some water supply problems that they want to, uh, deal with. And, uh, they think this will be a solution for their particular problem. They, that well has, or that, uh, site has been evaluated for an eight hundred gallon per minute, uh, water supply well. That has to be, um, run through a permit process through Eagle. And as part of that test, uh, or that permit, they have to perform an aquifer performance test as part of the operation. And I'll explain a, a little bit more about this, I can see right now that you won't be able to read a lot of things on there, but we'll go ahead, uh, with that anyway. Here's, um, an overview of where that forty-five acre parcel is, uh, the area outlined in, um, in the, um, you know, yellow, uh, square there, more or less in the middle. And as part of the, um, permit requirement, they have to perform a seventy-two hour pumping test at the rate that they actually, uh, intend to, uh, produce that in the future. So that would be the eight hundred gallons that I mentioned earlier. Um, the effect of that pumping over that period of time then is observed in the well itself, which I call T W one for Testwell One here. And then two observation wells, Observation Well, uh, One, or just OW one, is about a hundred and sixty-seven feet south of the pumping well. And Observation Well Two is a little over five hundred feet, more or less, to the west. Uh, those, um, what the purpose of that is to collect data on the aquifer response to that pumping. And they analyze those test results. And then ultimately, the objective with regards to the permitting itself is to predict the drawdown that would occur, uh, within the aquifer, uh, after a hundred days of continuous pumping. And in order to do that, they have to use a mathematical model. So these kinds of, uh, exercises usually don't involve, uh, numerical modeling of the actual groundwater system as it exists. You just make certain limiting assumptions and then move ahead then with those as a basis for the calculation. This is a, a view of what Testwell One looks like, that's will be the pumping well. Um, at the, uh, uh, time that they completed that well, it went all the way down to bedrock so that they knew where the bedrock was at that particular place. It's about a hundred and seventy-one feet below the ground surface, or a hundred and sixty-seven, excuse me, feet below the ground surface. So a ways down there deeper than most residential wells in, in this area. Um, the so-called static water level, which means, um, if you make a measurement when there's not pumping going on, then the water would be about, uh, sixty feet below the ground surface. The well is screened between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and forty-five feet below the ground. And that is in the middle or towards the lower end of an eighty-five foot gravel layer. That elevation of that gravel layer is about a hundred and fifty feet. And, um, these tests were performed in January of this year, earlier this year. After seventy-two hours of pumping, the water level declined about ten feet, you know, in the test well. And the two observation wells were, uh, quite a bit lower, Observation Well at one point three seven feet and Observation Well Two at one point seven, so not very much, um, resp- uh, decline in the water level due to pumping in those observation wells, which are pretty close. That would be consistent with what you, one would expect from a gravel type aquifer. The, um, as I mentioned, uh, you need to do a mathematical prediction of the one hundred day drawdown. And this is sort of a conceptual sketch about what an aquifer would look like and the type that is there. So down towards the bottom where the dark, uh, vertical lines are, those, uh, that's where the aquifer is, it's assumed to be confined, which is to say that there's clay above the top of it and something else below, in this case, it also is clay. Um, if, there's a drawing of some lines that curve upwards as you go away from the pumping well, which is the one on the right there, showing the effective drawdown. So the drawdown is greatest in the pumping well and then gets progressively less as you, uh, go out there. Uh, farther to the left in this diagram right here then. Um, though, that drawdown also increases with time. So if you make a prediction at a hundred days and a prediction at five hundred days, for example, you'll have a greater drawdown at five hundred days. And that's kind of shown conceptually here, again, the assumptions that, I guess I didn't go over all of those and I should basically, uh, be careful about this. It, it assumes that there's a constant aquifer thickness, that's whatever it is. But most importantly is that the properties of the aquifer, the types of soils and so on and there are constant over the entire area that's being, um, impacted here. Um, the, i- in this particular model, then, the water that's pumped is presumed to come from aquifer storage, which is to say it comes out of the pore spaces in the soils there. And a consequence of that model is that the aquifer drawdown that's predicted increases continuously with time. And that's just a consequence of the mathematical model itself, not necessarily the reality. Now, um, in reality, what you, we find is that all aquifers, literally, are recharged usually from above due to, uh, precipitation infiltrating into the ground and then percolating down through the groundwater itself. But when you assume that the aquifer is infinite in an extent and it's confined at the top, you don't get to count for that effect. And so that causes a number of assumptions that you can't really expect to conform to reality. And the one hundred days for the drawdown calculation is simply an attempt to account for the fact that they've left that stuff out of the model, uh, analysis itself there. For a hundred days for any well that's being produced, really doesn't make a lot of sense because it doesn't describe any physical processes associated with it. And that, and that's a, a limiting, um, uh, constraint on interpreting the results. So this is more like what an actual aquifer looks like. You have water that's coming down from the ground surface and eventually getting into that lower aquifer that's indicated there. And that, in the end, supplies the water that's being pumped out. So you can actually calculate the area that's influenced by the pumping by just saying eight hundred gallons per minute out, eight hundred gallons per minute coming down then on average over the, uh, some horizontal area there. And if you make, you need to know what the groundwater recharge is, but that's a number that there are estimates for. And, you know, I just look them up on, uh, on databases that are available. And for this area, it's about six inches a year, so about what you would get for recharge in here. Taking the six inches per year and figuring out what it would take to get eight hundred gallons a minute gives you an area of influence, if you will, that if you made it into a circle radially outward from the well, then it would be about six thousand feet in, uh, radius. So that's actually pretty, uh, um, significant area when you think about it. Um, now, because you've assumed that the aquifer has uniform characteristics then, this doesn't account for anything that would represent a deviation from that eighty-five foot thick gravel layer that exists in the vicinity of the test well. So this might be, uh, potentially important. So here I've done like an overlay, uh, overlay on a Google Earth image of six thousand foot radius from the test well. The test well's basically about in the center of that picture there. I go up there and point out the specific places that have marked, but that's really not necessary. So, so, you know, landmarks, you can see Parker Road a little bit to the right or the left, I'm sorry, of the circle there. Z Road, about the same distance to the right. Then in that case, Huron River moves through just the very, the very top right corner of that circle there. And you're almost down to I ninety-four on the south. So, um, this radius is, uh, calculated on the basis of a soon constant eight hundred gallons per minute because I don't know, I know that they're not gonna operate the thing constantly, but I don't know. I don't think they even know what they have for specific plan of operation right now then. So that would decrease the six thousand to down to a smaller value, but you'd have to have some information in order to estimate what that could be. And, you know, the question would be, uh, you know, a system of this size is gonna take a lot more than a hundred days to come to an equilibrium. And furthermore, are the aquifer properties constant within that whole area? Unlikely, that, that's all I can say. And so what I, one of the things that I did was to review well drillers' logs to try and get an idea about what, um, I'm looking at. This is just a conceptual sketch right here that says, oh, over on the right-hand side of an aquifer, there's something, it could be a clay layer of much lower, uh, permeability than the gravel. Or it could be a place where the bedrock comes up and blocks off the, uh, effective area of the aquifer. A, a number of different things here. And what happens then, on the left-hand side of that diagram, you see the curve coming up off to the left there. That's what would, you would have if there was no boundary effect. And on the right-hand side, then, you would have a lower water table then, uh, just due to the boundary effect or the encountering of the lens of, of, uh, lower thickness here. Why that's important um, is that this is an area where the aquifers are basically formed during the glacial period, uh, tens of, uh, ten thousand years ago or so. And, um, glaciers are complex in how that, they actually deposit material as they're melting back then. And so, um, there have been studies form, uh, performed in this area then to identify what the glacial geology is. But it's important to understand that this is the geology as observed on the ground surface and not a hundred and fifty feet down.
Question, real quick. This line would be the original guarding water level?
That's, that's what that's intended to do in this case.
And this would then be considered equilibrium?
It, you, you.
All things being equal.
I think this is probably using something like they do for the hundred days.
Okay.
On a hundred days, a hundred years, yeah.
Okay.
As one other quick questions are on that, is there, and maybe you have a depiction of this, like, I think is, does the river cutting through or some other structures underground or ground conditions? I'm sure different throughout, especially in six thousand square foot diameter.
Sure, yeah, I mean, you, you have in that six thousand foot area, again, there's. Sure. Yeah, I mean, you, you have, in that six thousand foot area, again, there's, Huron River is partially in that. Circle that I drew there and as is Mill Creek. And Huron River, just as a frame of reference, remember I said the top of the gravel layer and test well is about eight hundred and fifty. Feet. Huron River is roughly eight hundred twenty-five feet. So, in some ways, you're going to probably get water out of the Huron River if you were doing the pumping here for. A long enough period of time. But it also kind of serves as a block, an effective end to the. Any gravel layers that you might have in that area.
Does the river actually contribute more to groundwater recharge as a recharge to groundwater aquifer?
In, in general, in this area, the groundwater flows into the river. Now, if you draw the groundwater down far enough, you can reverse that process. But in general, it's, that's where the six inches per year would come from. It's making the measurement of the flow in the river and the flow conditions and saying that's all comes from the groundwater.
And one last thing, and then I'll, I'll let you continue. Are you aware, at least from what the illustration showed earlier about the, the radius of the circle, sorry, I was. Wrong mathematic phrase. Several of the other wells for the city of Dexter are either. In that area or very close to it.
All four of them are in it.
Ah, okay, got it.
I have a question. So six inches per year. To replenish that aquifer.
That's what the current replenishment rate is assumed to be about.
And I'm assuming there's other aquifers, though. So would that diminish refilling?
Six, six inches per year is like, say, over, you know, it's, it's, that defines kind of a local value, you know. So there's no area that's involved in that horizontal area involved in that calculation. So you would say. Six inches over the six thousand foot radius circle that was drawn there. At every location, six inches.
I think what Julian is saying is, the test well. Did it go through an aquifer, filled with clay and then gravel and then pump it from here, not here?
I think that, you know, it's, it's hard to say for sure exactly what the aquifer is. Cause it's clay and that's a function of the glacial geology part of the thing. But usually, that's one of the earliest aquifers that are encountered. Except for some of the residential wells. They don't, you know, they maybe only pump ten gallons a minute or something like that. They take water from there. And of course, that water, the recharge water would come through those wells first before it continues on down.
And then if we're in a drought?
That's another problem.
Thank you.
So what I put on here is like a conceptual sketch of a glacier. And, you know, the, the, what you see are two ice streams coming together. And continuing on down slope there. Those brown stripes and things like that along the sides of those. Are material that's been scoured up by the ice as it's moved down. Downhill, basically, as it's discharging. And those are called moraines. And there's different kinds of moraines, but the ones that are at the bottom. You know, in the kind of the lower right hand corner there, you see some ones that are basically perpendicular to the ice. Flow coming down. Those are called end moraines in general. And those are, they come about because. When the ice is melting, it doesn't proceed uniformly, you know, you might have ten years of. Warmer weather followed by ten years of colder weather and so on. So the ice, the ice recedes in kind of a. Bit and start sort of thing, and it can actually go back forward for a while if the weather conditions are right. Those moraines are actually usually pretty small in lateral extent. Not anything like thousands of feet or something like that. And on the right hand side over here, I've got a picture of a glacier. The glacier's kind of down to the lower right there, but you're looking down on it. And you can see those end moraines in that diagram. There's pictures that come down across in front of that. Water that sits there. And those are the end moraines that I'm talking about. And those are the things that are indicated at the areas of test well here at this location. Further down slope after that farthest up, a little hill, if you will. Is what is called outwash plains. And the water melts from the glacier. It has to continue to flow on downhill and it carries some of that stuff with it. And then it deposits out then in that. Area downfield from the end of the glacier in, in this particular situation. So that's kind of the story. Glacial outwash deposits tend to be broader in horizontal extent and more uniform. Because as the water flows, the heavier stuff settles out first. So this is a picture from an older report, but it shows the glacial geology of. Silo Township. And in the upper, the Silo Township is basically the bigger square that I've got. Circled or identified there. The upper northwest corner of the township, it's a quarter of the township. Is sections that are basically surrounding the test well, which is indicated with a little black circle there. All of the things that have hatch lines on them are identified as moraines. In the glacial geology of the ground surface. The things that are lighter colored there are identified as outwash areas there. So the little black circle, which is test well one, is just outside one of those outwash areas. It's a couple thousand feet. It doesn't look like very far on this diagram, but you know, this is an area that's. Six miles, that bigger square, six miles on its side there. So. If the, in the water supply evaluation that was done for this well, they said, maybe. We're in an outwash area and that's why we can get eight hundred gallons per minute. But, again, six thousand feet. Covers most of that smaller square up there. Basically. And so then that still doesn't, you know, you see a lot of variability even within that area here. And so the question is, you know, are, are those outwash deposits there? And the only way that I can really answer those questions without, you know, a really extensive study is to look. At state database that's called Well Logic. And what it does is it accumulates all of the well logs that well drillers. Produce when they complete wells in a given area. And then you can browse through them and find anything that. All kinds of different information then from looking at those. And so what I chose to do there was say, okay, if we go through this area, that's essentially that small square up there. Is there evidence of continuity of gravel deposits? Because you might need gravel deposits to get eight hundred gallons a minute from a pumping well. And so this is an example of what a single record looks like. Is that, and you can't read anything from here.
We have that information.
Yeah. And that, you know, they tell you where the well is located and some other characteristics associated with it. Including what the static water level that was measured at the time the well was completed. Where the, how deep is the well? Where's its screens? And they also give what they call drop pipe length, which tells you how deep the pump is. Below the ground surface, basically. So, in addition to that, then they have the, what I call the lithology of the well as it was being. Recorded by the well drillers who's putting it down. Basically, that's just telling you. What materials were encountered and for what thicknesses as you go down. So in this particular diagram. You can't read it, but it's, I know it's there. It says clay. And then it says, or excuse me, it says sand. It says clay with gravel in it. And then finally you get down to some, we call, it's called a water bearing sand. In this particular record here. So that's the kind of thing that I'm looking at. And then you go through several hundred of these records and you figure out what kind of story is telling. Spatially across the area. So this is again a reproduction of a Google Earth image. And I got little yellow marks on there for every single well that I found. What I interpret as a possible extensive gravel layer. That's in about the eight hundred fifty foot elevation range. So, so that involves a literal interpretation, but the biggest problem associated with it. Is for a residential well, when they're putting it down, they only go down. Until they, sure that they've got enough water bearing formation above where the well screen is going to be, that they're not going to run into any problems. So they don't, that last layer, whatever it is, you don't know the complete thickness. So that's just all there is to it. And, I also, so I, I look for gravel layers that, you know, either. Well stopped when it was encountered and I couldn't deduce what the total thickness was. Or if it penetrated through a gravel layer that was at least ten or fifteen feet in thickness, not eighty-five. Ten or fifteen. And the thing that you will see here. In addition to, excuse me, in addition to the gravel surface, I also look for bedrock wells. And, and one of the reasons for doing that is because if they went all the way down and it completed. A well in the bedrock, you can supply a residential well with that, but you can't get eight hundred gallons a minute out of it. But for a well driller to put a well down to bedrock, there can't be. Any good formations that they can get water from above that. So that gives me some understanding about what's going on in the area as well. What you can see by looking for those yellow dots is there are some spaces in this map where there. Nothing appeared, no yellow dots appear. And, and you know, the places are kind of obvious. I do have the four Dexter City wells, incidentally, on this particular map, just so that I can see it. But, you know, the city of Dexter itself doesn't have any coverage of well logs because it's on a public water supply system. And then there's an area kind of between Marshall Road and Test Well Location. On both sides of Baker. Where there aren't any wells at all. And unfortunately, that's an area where I'd really like to have information, because it seems to be a crucial area with regards to any interpretation. Of the area. And there are about a hundred and fifty dots on here and that probably is out of. I'm going to say about four hundred wells, something like that. So, in, in a hundred, over a third of the wells, then you've got indications of a gravel layer.
Just for clarification, this is Baker?
Yep.
You see the, there's a kind of a diagonal line? Just, there you are, right where you're at, right there. That's Baker.
That's Baker, just the brands.
And this is Marshall?
Yes.
And the test wells are here, right?
A little higher, yeah.
Oh, you're right there.
Yeah.
There's T W.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So all of this area is the area you really need to know about. And there are no wells.
No wells. You say, like, yeah, right in, right in here, this area, that's basically that parcel. Or parcels of land that, okay, yeah, yeah.
Now, the other, if I may interrupt for a minute, this area, that's new development.
That's Heritage Woods.
They're gonna have a well.
They're gonna have two wells.
Two wells. And in any hand, which is here, gonna have two wells.
Well, I, I'm going back on that Heritage Woods is going to be connected to water, because there's water main, do you think it goes up to or down? This is the old Top Spriders, uh, Creative Solutions Building on Dubit. There's water that runs like to about here. Uh, it's already been discussed and the views have been established.
Good, and that will, will affect that well.
Correct. Maybe wastewater, not water.
And, and I have, so I counted somewhere between seventy-five and eighty, depending on how you interpret them. Wells that are, that show the bedrock location. And the places where almost all of them are. Are in this kind of area right here is pretty concentrated. At least two thirds of the bedrock wells are in that little area right there itself. So, you know, again, if you look at the individual well logs, those are not good places for water supply. In general. But there's a lot of variability. Actually, if I go to where the test well is, again, pretty much in the center of this area. If you go to the east, there's gravel at eight hundred and fifty feet. If you go to the west, there's gravel at eight hundred and fifty feet. Some of it isn't very thick. So, that, I, uh, kind of covers a real brief summary of the. The results that I turned up. Again, about a third of the total wells have. Indication of a gravel layer in them. Eighty-five feet is the thickest gravel layer at the test well itself. So again, what's going on on that parcel did not represent as if of the entire area. The, north of the Huron River, again, there's almost no wells that identify gravel layers. But it's kind of outside of the contributing area anyway, so I didn't pay a lot of attention associated with it. And then, when you go over towards Z Road. There, gravel is at a deeper elevation, so it may not be the same material. And when you go to the south, around Marshall, there and so on, it's also tends to be deeper. So again, it may or may not be the same material.
So what you're saying, it may not be connected to that.
That's right. And I, in the report, written report, I make a, a few comments with regards to. Whether any residential wells in this area, in this area in general then might be impacted. By the high rate of pumping at the test well one location. And it's a little bit complicated to say exactly how you should think about it. Because if you use the results, you know, like from the hundred day drawdown calculation, there isn't going to be a problem. But again, that makes the assumption that. The aquifer materials are entirely uniform across this entire area here. And there's plenty of evidence to show. That what was experienced in the immediate vicinity of the test well is. Representing, or is representative of what's going on in the aquifer in a kind of a perverse way. In other words, it's the best for what's going on there. But then when you get farther away, you'll have more impacts. And so I just have to use my judgment on that.
That hundred day test assumes a uniform thickness or infinite.
And so here is a, uh, well log, uh, for a, a, a particular residence that's on Four Street Lane here. And this particular one, um, I'm gonna forget all the specific details that are associated with it. One of the problems is that the pump is only about four feet above the static water level. It's only about four feet above the pump elevation. And so with that situation, you don't have to get very much drawdown and the well will go dry.
How many feet is that between the test well?
It is about a thousand, I think.
Well, within the six thousand foot radius.
Yeah, yeah. It's, Four Street Lane are really the closest wells. There's some of them that are a little over five hundred feet away from, uh, Testwell One. That have the residences that sit back on the west side of Four Street Lane. So, so, you know, there are a couple of parts, uh, residences on Dexter and Arbor Road that are, because they're a little farther away, they're, you're maybe not quite so concerned about it. But it's not a big number in general. It's about probably between five and ten that you would say, we would probably need to be alert to keeping an eye on those if, if that's well within the production.
What would be the way we would monitor that?
Well, the, it, it, the ideal thing would be to put probably a single monitoring well kind of in between the test well one and, uh, closest of the Four Street Lane, uh, residences. So that you get some idea that it's coming. In, in the, uh, on the project that I'm working on in, in Arbor Township. It was, it's been a lot of problems, but you know, we actually gather static water levels from individual residential wells. And some people don't like that because they've had, you know, problems, you know, associated with access and so on. So it is possible to do that.
If that hypothetical test well or observation well gave us concern and, or gave, uh, cause, cause this was gonna affect Dexter's city residents as well as ours. If they stopped pumping from the test well, it showed off completely. That curve that goes down, how fast would that rebound?
Well, in, in Arbor Township, that's a deep watering problem, not a well, but it's the same issue. They stopped in October of twenty twenty three and it's almost back up to original levels.
It doesn't pop back up.
No, it, yeah, it takes a while. It would come up faster in, you know, a gravel layer, but there's, you know, that's, that's a gravel mine in our township, so.
I have a question. So on the many hands property there, uh, they have spacked out two wells. We don't have any well logic data on that until they drill them.
Yeah, until they drill them, yeah.
We don't even know yet what their proposed capacity is going to be.
They have, they have to kind of sort all that out. I mean, I've looked at the development plans. There's a number of units there. But I suppose there are probably smaller demands than a lot of residential, uh, wells would have. I, you know, I don't know if you'd be able to grab them.
I had a question. You and I sort of talked about this before. I had asked you, in your years of professional experience, have you ever seen wells that are quite a distance from the actual community well that are impacted, say, three thousand feet or?
I, um, one extreme example, um, it was mostly associated with the recovery after they stopped the withdrawal. It, somebody, uh, engineer called me up and said, somebody told me you could, you, you might know something about this. And so he started telling me about their water level starting to come up. And I said, when did it happen? And then it's, he, he told me, I said, well, that's it. That's a sign of what, you know, is going on with the shutting off of the withdrawal at this location. And that place was about six miles away. But it was a, a, a very special circumstances. But, you know, I, the, um, another project that I've had, um, eight thousand feet is in, there, you can see the effect of, of the, wow, the watering. And they're not the same aquifers, but we don't know exactly what this aquifer is. And nobody had any thought that there was an issue in either case, those kind of distances.
They expected it to be continually performing at a high level.
Yeah. This is a list, I guess, some of the major, uh, conclusions here. And, you know, wh- what I say is that the thickness of the gravel in the three wells, the test well and the two observation wells on that property are pretty much at the high end of gravel thickness throughout this entire region as far as I can tell. You know, a lot of them, I don't know how deep the gravel goes. So I, you know, we need to be a little bit careful about qualifying it. But it does look to be an anomaly in the sense that it, um, it's not representative of the entire area. And the consequence of that is that you will have more drawdown if you've got less permeable, uh, gravel, uh, uh, materials than throughout the entire area. So, um, you know, the, the issue is also, um, that we don't know a few things that we would like to know, including all those holes in the coverage in kind of crucial areas. And so I can't say too much about that. And then again, the problem that when they drill residential wells, they may only go ten feet or so down into a sand or gravel formation and say, ah, that'll give us ten gallons a minute, so we stop. So, so, you know, that, you don't know how much is below that, that you just don't know that. The way that the hundred day drawdown calculations, the way that I like to think about it is it matters how much water you're pumping. You know, the more, you, you should use a longer duration if you're pumping a lot of water, just because there's a much bigger contributing area associated with it. So I would question the premise of that hundred day drawdown calculation. But it is an eagle requirement that you do that and they will accept it. That, that is a, an accurate, and, and unless you can convince them otherwise. There, there are, especially in the two sections at the far uh, northern and western side of Scioto Township, there are a fair number of bedrock wells there. And most of them, you know, were completed in the bedrock itself, probably fifty of them out of maybe a hundred and fifty wells in those two, uh, sections possibly, um, that they didn't find any water bearing veins closer to the ground surface, so they had to go down into bedrock. So you can't rely, I think, on getting water coming from the west. That's just probably a good way not to think about it. You know, it's just, it's just, it doesn't look very promising.
A hundred day drawdown, and you said that's Eagle accepts the hundred day. But does that depend on the population in the area or the potential population, or is it just?
It's, it's, it's just a flow, the water use in general then. And, you know, the thing about it is eight hundred gallons per minute is, uh, is a, I don't even know of any wells in this area that produce at that rate. The, um, you know, I made a sort of back of the envelope calculation, said all the residences that are in this nine section area, that little square that I showed on the one map, that might sum to seventy five or a hundred gallons per minute. So it's not insignificant, but it's small compared to eight hundred.
So the, um, question, um, on these wells, this clustering of wells that went to bedrock, which are in the north west part of your square, the smaller square. Um, I know Dexter has at least one well there near the high school. And they, they have stated they have problems with that one.
That well, I haven't got a lot. I, I know that, I see the well log for it, but I don't know a whole lot about it. But it is, I think, not at the same capacity level as the four that are essentially strung out along the Huron River to the north.
So they state, um, Dexter states that this, um, well proposed by Mr. Lutton exceeds the capacity of all four of their existing wells.
Yes, I'm not sure that's exactly accurate, but it's about the same.
Right.
Yeah. And, and, you know, they don't, I, I, I guess in, I read on their website that in twenty twenty two, you know, their a- average daily uses corresponds to about three hundred and seventy gallons per minute or about half of that.
Well, and is it possible that in Dexter, they're kind of rotating their wells and?
Yeah, I don't know the exact detail. I just see some comments from the consulting firm, Williams and Works. It's who's done work for the city of Dexter on their well field saying that things didn't work out so well when they put those wells in operation. And so now they have to stage them very carefully
Yeah.
to keep, you know, from causing problems, one well to the next one.
So I believe also that, uh, consultant said he could not define the boundaries of this particular aquifer.
Yeah, the, 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 in, in that little memo that they wrote, which was a pretty cursory response to the results of the uh, water supply evaluation, they said that there's some evidence that there is a boundary effect. And I've looked at it and if I look at the two observation wells, I can say, I see the effect in one of them. I couldn't, I don't, and the other one. And so I'm not sure, you know, whether I should put a lot of stock in that statement, you know, as being, you know, real firm.
Any other questions?
It bothers me that Eagle, or they watchdogs, accepts a hundred day calculation, so they've got an assumption that the aquifer is horizontally infinite. And of course, no act of part of the investigation.
I, you know, I think you have to think about how it happens, you know, in order to have a really good understanding about. Because, um, in general, you know, they need to have a procedure that everybody is sort of bound by. And then they follow it and then it's, you know, because Eagles defined, that's what you do. You do it and then everything proceeds from there. The problem, again, as I stated earlier, is that it shouldn't be the same for an eight hundred gallon per minute well as for a three hundred gallon per minute well or a residential well for that matter, because they just impact different areas. And a lot of it has to do with information. If you wanted to do a more complete analysis, you would need information that's usually not readily available in those pump tests. And so that's, that's why they do it.
Yeah, I just, one comment, I wanted to say, I wanted to thank you for doing so much intensive work in such a short amount of time. Um, I want to just thank the board, um, when Kathy brought this proposal for supporting it and for David, Mariah and Kathy for your work. I think what's interesting about this is, is that, you know, David, we have to be the watchdogs, you know, because you know, the analysis makes sense if it's within a single jurisdiction with shared interest, but that's, that's not the situation here. We have a, a neighboring city that's trying to develop past its water capacity and trying to reach across the Scioto Township to get that capacity. So, I mean, I, I don't think we can rely on Eagle and certainly not the city of Dexter, whose interests may be directly opposed to ours of trying to preserve open space. This is high priority open space, which I keep hearing is been priority for twenty years. And certainly we want to protect the aquifer, the homeowners. And, and I think that, you know, Dexter has, that's not Dexter's interest. Dexter's interest is, um, development, the million dollar contribution.
The real dilemma is that if they, if they think that they're getting a good water supply and then it doesn't turn out to be that way, the damage has already been done.
That's right.
Wouldn't they have, wouldn't there be tackling though, over time to correct it?
Well, they, they would have to reconfigure their system somehow.
You know, it's almost like this is, this is a resource and
Finite.
Finite resource that one jurisdiction wants to annex another jurisdiction to take.
That is what it is. I'm still struggling with problems. I'm sorry, excuse me for being blunt, but I think, I think it's not just like that. That is it.
Oh, that'd be an interesting question. In, in other states, I'm sure Michigan has it. There's mineral rights. I don't know how that works with water law. In this state.
You know, it varies a lot. Describe it. And, um, you know, it used to be that they completely separated surface water and groundwater, you know, they, as if they don't interact with each other, you know. And obviously, anybody who kind of understands anything about the processes that go on, that makes sense. And so from a practical point of view, um, you know, it is the, Michigan has done some things in relatively recent years so that um, withdrawals that are more than two hundred thousand gallons per day.
How much per minute?
It's, that's about, um, uh,
Two hundred gallons a minute.
Yeah. You have eight, one, the.
Uh, a hundred thirty eight gallons a minute.
Okay, yeah. You, you have to, um, you have to have it, you know, registered with the state.
But that doesn't stop like Nestle water.
And they will require an evaluation.
That doesn't stop Nestle water up north from sucking up our water and selling it to all the surrounding states of Babel. I, I think they pay the city, uh, up north, uh, two thousand or even if it's twenty thousand dollars a year, it's.
They, they, I mean, there isn't a rate there.
It's, it's a, it's disastrous, abhorrent. Thank you for your analysis.
So will this analysis continue?
I think our relationship is going to have to continue.
Yes, I understand.
Till we have more definition of the positions board is going to take on the annexation. I mean, that's our next discussion, but we need more information.
I mean, that's our next discussion, but we need more information.
Yeah, and and you know, if if some of the questions won't go away, you know, people will say, oh, sure, that makes sense. If there's interest in play there, then, you know, there tends to be a little more competition, I guess.
Yeah. Well, thank you, this was very informative. Gives us a lot to think about. And and yeah, very interesting. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
All right.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Ray.
Have a good evening.
You want, yes. Eighteen gallons a minute, one point.
Five to two million a day, which is eight point two percent of what the city of Ann Arbor's public water systems themselves or I guess uses between themselves, uh, so many other customer cities has.
Eight, eight percent.
It's eight point two percent of the city's city system. Yeah.
All right. Next is possible action, full-time regular staff for Parks Department.
Hello, Gem.
Hello.
HR generalist, manager.
Manager.
Manager now. What she names that I. She liked to buy it.
Sure. Uh, so, as you know, we have brought this to the board table in the recent past. Okay, speaking of, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, and with Christie and Aurora, we thought it made sense to bring this shoe back to the board. Unfortunately, um, the Romberg study is just, we don't, we have no.
We have preliminary information.
Preliminary information, okay.
So indicating that the wage is consistent in the role. But there are some responsibilities of that role that I need to verify in terms of if the role is similar. But the, what I've received so far, the wage is consistent for this role.
Do you have any sense about the grade that this would fall into?
Um, I I do, uh, but I'm not quite sure on that.
Okay, no problem. And aside from the information from Romberg, is there anything else that's changed or new? Okay. So do you expect to get the kind of final word from Romberg? I know how they go back and forth with the samples. Excuse me, um, so the twenty-one fifty is.
That wage does seem to be consistent for that role.
Okay.
Did comparison, I know, um, some of the municipalities were identified, we're in the Romberg study and then in Washmont County specifically, some organizations that did have a more comparable positions and within those, um, we, our current rate of twenty-one fifty is higher than most other organizations, uh, except for one. And within that organization, those lower wages are based on classifications of one, two. The highest classification comes within three dollars of our current wage. So it is still as a first year position in line with organizations such as the Washmont County of ours. Does he read?
Right, move along. Or.
Should we wait for personal or?
Sure.
And discuss it.
Um. Oh, I had a couple of things. Thank you for bringing this back. I have a couple of thoughts, just, and and I've been thinking about this a lot. One of the things that I thought about when when we talked about the wage for this position, so it's a twenty-one fifty an hour. Washnot County has a a very high cost of living, some of our many employees don't live in our community. It's understandable they don't necessarily live in the township, but many of them commute a long distance and live far away, uh, so I I I have a hard time at twenty-one fifty. Um, a living wage is outlined by MIT, MIT has Living Wage Calculator. For one adult with zero children, it's twenty-three to an hour. Um, I'm not necessarily proposing that's the exact wage for this position, just a piece of data. Um, that's out there for all the expenses, housing, food, uh, utilities, transportation.
What was his number again?
Twenty-three dollars eighty-two cents.
And that times forty, times.
Times twenty, eighty would be just as a piece of information, forty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars sixty cents as annualized wage. It it's probably a bigger conversation than just this piece and this position request. That's something I want us to think about, because I I do want people to be able to afford, not if to live in just our township, but that or somewhere within close distance. I do have some questions about where this would go within stepping grade. I do think there needs to be some other items added to the model motion. I appreciate all the work that's been done on this, we're just in the budget process now. I really want to do this as part of the full budget process. And that way we can square up every different number, square up looking at how this how the wage impact. We we have all that that work that's put back to our former finance manager did. It's wonderful. I just need more time and I really wanted to go through the process that we've established when we started working on last, actually, two years ago, I think it was the first authorized position list.
More than that.
Anyways, several years ago, I would really like to see it go through that process, thank you.
If we were to go through that process, what would be the soonest hire date?
Well, we have the timeline, so I mean, I I mean, Thursday at ten, all the departments are submitting their positions. The the plan was budget for April first. I don't know, I'm sure there's some creative ideas about accelerating higher dates within that, definitely through it. But we're accelerating process. I'll I'll just make a comment, and sorry, I don't have a a clear answer. I think there's probably some ways, but definitely April first is the appropriation. If, um, what I just want to say is, and we've talked about this, um, several times, I want to say that, like, I am excited about the progress made, um, in Parks and Paths, I want to thank you, Murphy. Um, because you're building out a whole new program for the township, which is awesome. I do want to ask a kind of across our operational areas that we have comprehensive operational plans, and I appreciate plans change. But knowing that there may be other, you know, I know there's going to be a lot of positions asked for across the organization. And I'd like to consider it all together. We've had, just in parks alone, you know, discussion about if a if there would be an assistant director or or Nats, it sounds like you're kind of narrowing in on what you need. But I would just say, I know this particular process has been bumpy, but I think the upside is, you know, I think it seems like communication has improved, it seems like things are flowing now, so I appreciate that. Um, I would like to consider a full staffing plan, and I mean that for all of our departments and once a year. And as we get into the budget process, I will be, you know, proposing, you know, that we have a little more discipline as an organization to look at staffing requests, vehicle requests, capital requests, just kind of get a little more, um, discipline um, around that, in unless there are, you know, extenuating circumstances.
So qualified.
So I would. Okay, I do want to hear that, I just want to say I wouldn't, I would not be supporting this at this time. Um, I would, um, certainly, you know, be supportive of this if it were at budget time where we could verify that there were sufficient funds to finish Seabrook Parkway where we need one to two million of fund balance, where we know that we have enough money to support. Um, so just not at this time, um, but look forward to seeing the full staffing plans. Thank you.
Trustee.
Trustee Brand.
Has everyone else spoken?
No. Just go ahead, you had a look in space like you wanted to say something.
No, I.
Oh, okay, I apologize. Okay, trustee Brand, did you?
Um, yeah, Jessica, you've got the pulse on, I love it. CIP process that I don't have, and you just made a statement that I wasn't aware of, that we're going to have lots of requests or additional positions.
I sense I've I've heard of several, I don't know for sure, and certainly we won't know. Nikki will be receiving them Thursday at ten, but I I am aware of several.
So.
Townshipwide. But we often leverage different funds to support those if we want to.
Okay, so I, um, my preference is to stick with the standard process that we have defined that uh, determines that we go through an annual process for evaluation. Which, this is mid-cycle, three quarters of the way. I I my preference is to take it through the standard process, we evaluate the salary wherever it falls. And then we have to also compare the employee wages to the the rest of Parks expenses and planned expenses all within the confines of the millage. I mean, we can't, the millage is controlling, right? It's not like we're going to get more one year, less the next year. So I think we have to look at this along with the proposed projects um, and how we fund the entire department.
Trustee Riser.
We've got a lot of parks, we've got a lot of preserves. There's work to be done on those. I'm going to support the recommendation of our Parks Director. This agenda appears to have a recommendation from the Parks Director, our office coordinator and the HR manager recommend approval, so I'm gonna, you know, I would support this tonight, I would I would support this in the future. I guess what I'd want to know from Murphy is, if we don't do this tonight, but we put it off until the spring, the summer, whenever it is, what's not going to get done in our parks? How do our residents suffer from from putting this on?
As I've said before, there has been a lack of management done in our preserves as a whole. Specifically, we're trying to make a lot of progress this year. In the summer, we're able to make progress on our voracious invasives, but we are completely overrun by Woody invasives that cannot be managed at any time except for the late fall and winter months.
Like bottom olive kind of stuff or multi-flower roses or?
Yes, multi-flower rose, autumnal buckthorn, and eighty percent of our reserves are overrun by those species specifically. And we would be able to make immense progress. Even having them for this extra month has given us an opportunity to target these species in a way that has never been done before. With four people, we are, it is, it is night and day difference. But it's not even just the natural areas management aspect. It's impossible for me to plan for volunteer events or programming, to not only plan for those things, but to have the time to do all of those things, single-handedly, not only plan them, but advertise for them and then also staff them. It's, it's just impossible for me to do all of those things by myself. And by waiting until April, that means that's already a quarter of twenty-twenty-six, where we have not been able to offer programs. We have not been able to offer volunteer opportunities. And if we wait until April, at best, if we're working really diligently, we get programs out advertised in two months, maybe four months, most likely, which really we're looking at essentially at least another year where we have failed to provide consistent programming, education, opportunity for the residents.
Yeah, but what's the priority, providing programming or having well-managed parks?
I think that they go hand in hand because it's so important to have people understand why management matters. It's, it's difficult for people to understand when they go to Marshall Park that that place is overrun by black alder, and they don't know that all of that means we have a a lack of biodiversity, and you go out there and you see nothing. Because it's covered in invasive species. And it's it's a twofold issue, education and preservation have to go hand in hand because we can't encourage residents to help us, which is really the thing we're lacking the most, is volunteer engagement, because even if we add two staff members, it's still not enough. We need to have a core volunteer group, I mean, ideally thirty people who regularly volunteer. And we can't do that when it's just one person, most organizations with this much land have a dedicated volunteer coordinator and a dedicated program and outreach staff member. We have so many aspirations, but none of those things are going to come to fruition if we don't take seriously the fact that this department has been fundamentally understaffed since it was developed.
Does this have the support of PPP?
Yes. And this came to public comment, the last time it was brought to the table to voice that support.
What concerns me is we don't act on this tonight. What Murphy said is work will cease on December thirty-first. And this is the time when you get a lot of very productive work done, especially in trail maintenance, creating trails. And I'm talking about the outside work, but are they the grunt work, not the intellectual work? And then coming into March, yet with zero staff, nothing will be done. And if we don't start hiring until April, for all intents and purposes, nothing will be done until at least May. And that's when you can't, or it's a waste of time to cut and cut the invasives. Because it's the wrong time of the year, you got to start in October. So if we don't do anything tonight, basically, work on the parks will cease until next early summer. And so I I understand the issue here. But you've got two different clocks working. You have the budget clock and you have reality of conservation clock, and they're not in sync. I mean, it'd be great if our budget started on January first, like, like the, like the environmental clock. But it doesn't, and you have to hope, you're we're going to have to make, either we're just going to have to ignore the parks for the next six months. Or we make some sort of, um, stopgap measure. Now, if 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 you don't want to work, if you want to do this tonight, then I would propose that we extend the seasonal staff for another four months. And and keep those three, uh, now three.
Four positions.
Four positions, keep those four positions until we work out all the, we go through bureaucracy and get it all squared away and smoothed out, get it graded properly. I'm not sure it's graded right. Get good, and we get the salary properly. I would even, perhaps even enhance the job description a little bit. And that might increase the grade. And that might increase the grade because I think Romberg is using the wrong job description, the grade piece, these jobs. So I would say if we're not going to do this tonight, let's extend the the four seasonal staff. For four to six months.
I have a comment regarding extending temporary staff once again. I would like to contact our labor attorney on that. Because there is, there may be. A ramification on a temporary. Because a temporary is temporary. It's typically only no longer than six months. And when you extend that, it doesn't look favorably upon the employer to keep that classification as temporary. So once you get past six months, you really are working towards a regular employee. With full benefits that are allotted to the other regular employees. I would want to discuss that with our labor.
I do like what you're saying, David, though, about, I mean, I I don't think it has to be either or, I would hope. But I I would also say that I and I went back and looked at the last budget and the budget before. Every staffing proposal that has come from Parks. For the last couple of years at budget time is is approved, right? And so it was a year ago. The ecological clock hasn't changed. The budget clock hasn't changed. That's what I'm talking about, and I'm saying this collectively as a township, our discipline. Like, we knew the ecological clock when we approved for temporary. People and and we didn't, maybe we didn't consider it enough. We need to consider it more. I get it. But 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 that didn't change, and I and I also heard, you know, ideas about moving forward, you know. In the future with the idea of a volunteer coordinator, program coordinator, those those positions. Oh, sorry, you said most other places have something like that. So, you know. I'm just saying, I. I'm not sure that the the NAT's job description as they are. Is exactly what we need. I it's not. It's just where are we going to focus? So. That's all. I'd be open if if there were within. Labor attorney and Aurora's advice, ways to, you know, keep some of the work going through the winter. You know, and I would also be supportive if the board could. You know, with Nikki's leadership, you know, prioritize the Parks Fund and our budget deliberation, whatever we can do.
True. I got a suggestion.
That would move it up a couple of months.
Hold that thought. Trustee Noel, thank you. Um, repeat a couple of questions. If two people were hired full-time now. What would they do exactly the next four months?
They would do a lot of what they've been doing for the past month and what they're going to be doing throughout the December, which is. Working on invasive Woody removal in the preserves.
Every day they'd be out there doing this?
Yeah. Um, even even this week, they've been out there.
In this weather?
Yes, and we've we have sufficient gear to ensure that they are safe and comfortable. I even went out yesterday morning to work with them because it was particularly cold. I wore the same gear and I went out just to make sure. I mean, I've worked in these conditions for years, but also it's good to set an example and say, you know, it's cold, but if I can do it, everybody can do it. But but it is true. That's what these positions are for over the three months is to target these species that cannot be targeted or. Have to be targeted very limitedly during the regular seasonal staff's time. But also with the full-time positions, I really do want to focus in on creating programs at the beginning of the year. And then having that ready to go for the whole year instead of planning in quarters, which is what we've always had to do because it's just been me. And the hard part is with, especially with educational programming. I can't plan. Trees of Michigan program. Four months from now, and I don't even know if the staff members I have are going to be strong enough in that area to effectively. Do that program. And that's part of what's so important about knowing where people's strengths are so that we can also provide those strengths to the community. So we have one staff member who's amazing with herps. I mean, that I think that was, everybody loved that presentation, and that's the kind of information and passion that we can tap into. And provide a really valuable resources for the residents, especially in this area. I think there is. Of a lack of opportunity to. Participate and understand. But yeah, a lot of it would be outdoor work hand in hand with prepping for the spring and summer programs and helping with. Going to public events so that we can start doing serious recruiting for volunteers.
Thank you. Trustee.
So I didn't get to say what.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
So I can see David's position and Jessica's position. This is sees, this is weather-dependent in a way, what she's talking about, and. And I could support this tonight. Now, I could also support. Another arrangement that that allows Murphy to have two people full-time. If it can be worked out now, like on a temporary basis or another basis, I don't know, and maybe that isn't advisable. According to Aurora. Bill Thacker, maybe. I don't know, but I would support it and. It could be done any number of ways. So the question is, how how would we do it?
Okay, trustee Brand.
Yeah, I have a question about what your staffing. What you're going to ask for for staffing for the next fiscal year, starting on April first. In total.
In total, we'd be asking for two seasonal staff and then the two permanent staff.
So no other?
No.
What do you for Aurora?
Sure.
Could we hire four consultants as of January first? Or consultants, not seasonal contractors.
Consultants.
I have no idea. I don't hire the contractors.
I mean, would Mr. Thacker have a problem with that?
I don't know.
Good, that maybe we can do that.
He's kind of. Yetchy.
Well, yeah, I I could say that hiring. People that are under our control and several other factors. Is a labor issue. There's issues with hiring people as contractors, treating them as employees, but they're. They're contractors, not employees, but they are employees. I I would defer to our Labor Council to provide some.
Let's get you.
Information on that. Issue.
I think, may I? Things I think that's really important to consider is. Informally. We do have currently a staff that has been here for over nine months. And who are extremely qualified for the positions that they're in, who'd be extremely qualified for the positions that we're posting. If we wait for a long time, people have to search for other jobs, and I'm not saying that we should do this to to. Hand out jobs to anybody. What I am saying is. Right now, we have the opportunity to hire two extremely qualified people. Who are already familiar with our system, who are already familiar with the township. I just think it would be. I think it would be a mistake to miss out on the opportunity when we. Have the, it seems like there's support for these positions in general. To wait. I I that's just not my preference. For that reason, and for all the reasons that I I stated.
Well, I. You've not said anything yet. We have to remember that in two thousand nineteen, when this went to the voters, they voted for Parks and Pathways and whatnot, and it was. Well, presentation was in twenty nineteen. I remember that all of that, but anyways. Yeah, so that's what the voters want. They still want their parks and pathways and preserves. Even the other, the LPC village, the Open Space Village, was. Renewed. And for us to, and we, and the. This program has come a long way since the beginning. And this is, we have more preserves. We have a brand new one that you're not going to be able to touch all by yourself. And sometimes. We're just, we're just not going to be able to support this program with one person working and then. Having, you know, after it's been established, and then we have four months or five months or whatever without anybody. And I really feel that our directors know we hired them to do a job and they know what. They're doing, hopefully. I mean, it seems like. I get I get a lot of emails because I'm the supervisor and I get both the complaints and the and the compliments, and when there's a complaint. Murphy, there's this pathway that needs, and immediately you're out there, and then we get a a a response from that person stating, thank you so much. That was so fast. I mean, it's happened. So I want to see this continue, and I want to see us support this program. Yes, we do have a budget. We have a process. And we also can tweak it if the the April first. I just don't want to see four or five months without having anybody else, you know, except for you. And then we're going to be behind. I'm in support of this. The way it is.
Yes. It it doesn't sound like. There'll be, I liked your idea, David. It doesn't sound like. It's advisable to extend the temporary, but I like that idea. Um, I I would just remind the board that in our budget calendar, you know, it's Thursday at ten. That all the positions are due to Nikki and Aurora and Christie, and the first time we'll be hearing it is February tenth. So I'm just saying that'll be the first time we're hearing it. And, yeah, we're, you know, if the board votes for this tonight. Um, I would just, again, encourage this organization to have more discipline. I look forward to getting the. Full recommendations for the other physicians with our new finance director. Um, who's really gonna be able to give us a true analysis of where we're gonna have to make choices in each of these funds, but. I appreciate David trying to reach consensus. So I would call the question.
The board.
And there's a question.
Your auto motion that you seconded. The the auto motion that you said.
So the model motion is to authorize the job description for the natural areas technician amend FYE twenty-five dash twenty-six budget. Amend the authorized positions list to eliminate two temporary natural areas technicians effective. Uh, January first, twenty twenty-six, and add two regular full-time natural areas technician positions for the Parks Department effective January first, twenty twenty-six.
Fred. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Riser.
Vote yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
April?
No.
Linton?
No.
Brand?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed? Motion passes for three.
Thank you, Murphy.
Thanks for us. Want to take a break?
Yeah, five minutes. Can we do five minute for you? Nikki. Would that be okay if we took a break? Just five minutes.
I went to all fresh for me.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, so.
Thirty.
Okay, welcome back at nine thirty. New business discussion only, oh, one discussion only, consideration of proposed two twenty twenty-six capital plan and proposed twenty twenty-six tree plan. And welcome Nikki, our new finance director.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'm going to turn it over to. My supervisor, which I know I've heard to all of you, but on my day-to-day, Jessica.
Sure, so just really brief. Thanks, Nikki. Um, everybody, I just want to draw your attention to the the packet. We're going to hear from Nikki to provide an overview of this first presentation. I just want to note we're doing this differently than we've done it. Years before, more streamlined. Now, since we have somebody who can kind of hold the whole capital plans and work with department heads and bring it all to us. I will also say that last week I met with Christie and Nikki. We'd conferred on kind of the timeline now, since Nikki's on board because we adopted the timeline and process. Before Nikki was here, and at the end of Nikki's presentation, I would ask the board to consider the proposed changes to the timeline and. And take action on that timeline. But with that, I just want to thank Nikki Timmons for being here, really our first finance director here at Scioto Township. She's really. Got comes to us with great qualifications and has hit the ground running, so I will turn it over to Nikki.
Thank you, and I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. I do want to say I want to apologize for giving this CIP packet to the board a little bit late. I want to say that the staff has been great. Everyone has turned in their capital improvement plan timely. We gave them the November twentieth deadline. However, there were many changes going back and forth between myself and different directors and those who had input all the way up until the last minute, in which I turned in the packet. So. And I wanted to give everybody an opportunity to get their voices heard and to make sure that what they were requesting was actually in the packet. This capital improvement plan has a six-year span in terms of which. Every department has put down what I like to call like a wish list, or what they would like to see happen within their organization, and on behalf of the township. This is in no way approved already. That's why this is before you, so that you can provide your input feedback as to what your thoughts are. Whether or not you're for it, against it, if you want to see it in a budget. This is a beginning process. Um, in terms of how we develop a budget, so that if it gets approved or you're going to see it in our draft of our budget program, that it'll be included at that time. I do want to make note of the CIP and what it is, just for the record. It's a comprehensive capital improvement plan, and it's an essential tool used in the planning and development of social, physical, and economic well-being of the township. Required under Scioto Township Co-ordinates SEC two dash one one five. Capital Improvement Program. This process is necessary to step in and organize effort to strengthen the quality of the public facilities. And services to provide a framework for realization of community goals and objectives, and to provide a sound basis on which to build a healthy and vibrant community. Uh, the CIP informs residents and other stakeholders on how the township plans to address significant capital needs over the next six years. And the CIP provides visual implementation of the township's need and influence community growth and infrastructure. This plays an increasing significant role in implementation of the master plan by providing the link between planning and budgeting and capital projects. As outlined in the package that you guys have received thus far. That being said, I wanted to go and dive into the packet. If you have any specific questions. For me, I have my laptop. I can take good notes. One of the things that has been done this year that, you know, will probably not be done going forward in the future, or will have it somewhere else. Is we've put completed projects in there as well for FY twenty-five and twenty-six. So just as a note to tell you. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you had something to say. Um, just as a note, so that you are made aware of what was done in the past, and then now it's completed. The capital plan really should be looking at with six years from now and ahead. However, there are some things in here that is completed. Okay. I wanted to bring notes there. Um, and you guys can let me know, because this is a collaborative thing between myself and you all, because I'm here as an extension to you. Uh, but just going in order and trying to quickly go through it unless you have questions. Under our information technology section, our office coordinator, there is some jumping around because it was kind of hard to line things up. Initially, how it was. So if, and I tried to make sure I put that it was a draft and at the bottom as a footnote, who's responsible for the packet? Or who put the data together just for clarity, because. It was difficult to number the pages as things were coming in all the way up until the last minute, so that it could have been more clear for you guys. Okay, so with that being said, under our office coordinator, we have EV charging stations as a potential. Um, capital improvement here for the township. Well, security camera systems. And if you want me to pause, I'm just going to go through like her area, and if you have stuff you want to add. Or if you want to email me your comments or changes or likes or dislikes about what's in the plan, because I know it's a lot of data. It's fifty-two pages. Lot of information. Likes or dislikes about what's in the plan because I know it's a lot of data. It's fifty-two pages, a lot of information. Um, and it's been a long day and a long night. And so I'm gonna try to get through this as quickly as possible. With that being said, we have security cameras, um, second server. We have office furniture listed under our coordinator that has already been completed. With a total cost of twenty-eight thousand dollars. We also have proposed in there a township vehicle. Projected like forty thousand dollars, no more spend that could be fully used for our assessing, planning, zoning departments. Um, not for one specific area, but what was noted for me by the assessing department and Andrea. Our assessor there that we are mandated by, we're not mandated, but recommended by the state to go to our parcels, which is about sixty-eight hundred. Under her, uh, direction or assessing. Twenty percent of those should be reached. However, we're at twelve percent. So we don't touch all of the parcels that the state commission recommends. She has requested among others that there be like a full vehicle so they're not using their own cars. Um, just for like safety purposes as well as it being identified because there's a lot of white trucks. With the SiO logo. So as they come onto sites with new developments or looking at decks. And things of that nature that people identify them as an employee. Working in the community or something was to come arise, a neighbor could call it in knowing that they're legitimately there and not. You know, for some unforeseen reason or breaking and injury or something crazy. But. Um, with that being said, that was recommended about this vehicle so that they could do their day-to-day job or some. Driving different vehicles in their own personal vehicle to different sites, just for uniformity purposes. Um, moving on unless there's any questions for that. We have election equipment. There is a, uh, state requirement in terms of changing our election equipment. So we're proposing back of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, for our elections. And you can feel free, Jessica, to correct me if I'm.
No, it's all there.
Okay. All right. And the next one is township buildings and grounds. Uh, this is also combined. With our utilities director. So we have under that sewer manhole pipeline repairs, which has already been. Uh, is in progress. Um, and if you go to. That which is right after elections, that's mandated by our, our utilities director. We have the Jackson Road pump station generator. It's a completed task and yet listed in our CIP. And you'll see that multiple times and I know it's difficult and if I'm going too fast for you guys to keep up, please let me know. Um, this was more informational because the Jackson Road pump station generator has been completed. It was a total cost of two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, four hundred dollars. Uh, we have Jackson Road pump station upgrades, which won't take place until FYE twenty-thirty to thirty-one. And that's, uh, a projected or estimated cost of a hundred million dollars. Um, just bringing note to that for you guys to take a look at that. And again, you can provide impact, yeah, or input feedback, what have you. Um, moving on from there, we have air releases. My page changed, so please forgive me. Okay, here we go. We have, um. Air release valve repair for FY twenty-seven through twenty-thirty. Um, also in our utilities debt director, we have a meter study and pump evaluation that's currently in progress. Um, that's costing us an estimated four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, we have an annual sewer rehabilitation inventory reporting. It hasn't been started, but this is for FYE twenty-seven through thirty, thirty-two. Let's take note of that. We have a Jackson Road.
Excuse me. Is it okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So the annual sewer rehabilitation inventory report that. I believe. Is this cor- is this a, this is a new? This, this appears to be new from last year. So I would just be curious. Just a flag for, for you or for Christie, just. Kind of, um, the. The rationale. Um, for that, it sounds like a good idea, but. Yeah, and, and I don't need the answers right now, but yeah, I wasn't trying to get in the weeds. I just want to flag. Any, any new ones?
Sally, can you?
Yes. So this is. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
So this is a new one from last year and in talking with Brandon on this one. Um, he wanted to take all of the information we've gotten from the televising project that's ongoing. All of the analysis that we've had and all of the pipe and manhole rehabilitation data. And compile that into one comprehensive document. That they can use going forward. So anything that we haven't done in these. Six fiscal years, we could easily look back on. In a few years and make sure that everything's getting treated. So this is the new one and this is just one. They just want to pile everything that we have that we're doing in the current six-year program into one final document.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Any other questions? I don't know.
No.
I, I would just. One quick thing to electric vehicle chargers. Uh, I think it's good the fiscal year is estimated in just to keep the board aware further down in here somewhere.
On our first page.
Yeah, very first thing. Um, it should probably be done at least the site work to, uh. Yeah, prior to the parking lot being done because if we don't do the site work prior to the parking lot being done, we're just gonna have additional costs. Thanks.
Along with any building that might be out there, whether it's for vehicles or whatever.
So Nikki, you're not going too fast. We were supposed to read this ahead of time. So go from that assumption.
Yeah, keep moving.
It's fair.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
No, we're following along.
Bumbling together.
We're playing cards.
Okay, so we are still under our utilities director and we are going through and backing up Jackson Road pump station upgrades. I've mentioned that already, just making sure we're all like back in alignment, ten million. Uh, for FYE twenty-thirty to twenty thirty-one. Air release valve repair and replacement FYE twenty twenty-seven through twenty thirty. And then I talked about the meter study pump evaluation FYE twenty twenty-seven that's currently in progress. When we mentioned, and I think I stopped here with the annual sewer rehabilitation inventory reporting and it's not starting yet. Yep, well, we got the Jackson Road. Bow meter pit slash F V F D is in progress. Uh, most of these fees are for FYE twenty-seven and twenty-eight to six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. And then we have a water reliability study update that's currently in progress. Uh, we have Marshall Road water main that's started and most of these are expenses are FYE thirty, thirty-one.
I want to stop right there.
Yeah. Thirty, thirty-two. Okay.
This is new.
This is, uh, uh, very new. Um. This is, um. A project that has never been discussed at the, at this. For this board at all. So I'm not sure we prioritize this as a. Um, a part of our planned, our planning process, our master plan, our. So, uh, uh. This may be someone's goal, but it's not been established as the, as a goal.
It has not been established as a board goal.
So Kathleen, you are correct in that, um, that it hasn't been brought up to this before. The reasoning behind this one is the fact that you have two long dead ends on both. Baker and Zeeb that if you were to have a water main break under ni- I ninety-four, you would be. Having people out of water for extended period of time. Brandon wanted to put this one on the CIP because now that Heritage Woods is being constructed, there are quite a few more homes that would be out of water. Should there be a break on Baker Road? However, this has not been in the township CIP before, but it has been in the Eagle Water Reliability Study. Twenty-year capital plan improvements in a different form for the past ten years. So this is not new to the overall water master plan. Documents. This has been in having a redundant connection. So if you have a break under I ninety-four, you can still feed water. Um, so it is new to this specific capital improving. Improvement process, but it's not new to the Eagle master plan requirements. I hope that helps.
It, it does help. But this makes an assumption that. We want to have this redundancy go completely along Marshall Road. And that has not been established.
Jeri's right.
Isn't that what a capital improvement plan is, is to put your. Projects or ideas and then we discuss, because what, what, when do we discuss these if it's. Or, and you, you know what, um. I apologize. Pressureable. He had his hand up before the rest of us.
Well, thank you. I was actually just gonna say, uh, I, I spoke with the engineer earlier today because I had seen this item of the packet and I said. This, where did this come from? And, and that's where I heard the, the same understanding and. Certainly understand it's not been discussed before. Uh, it's not necessarily something we determined should happen, but. Discuss it, see if it's something we want to discuss more, see if it's something we want to revert.
Sure.
And there's nothing that says at this point that it has to be constructed in fiscal year thirty-one, thirty-two. We're currently evaluating this versus the previously pro- proposed alternatives as part of the water reliability study. Uh, but Brandon wanted to make sure this was in here so that it was on the horizon and that it wasn't forgotten about. So there's nothing that says we can't kick it down the road if it's determined not to be a high priority capital improvement.
Don't, Sally, couldn't we wait until we had the results of the water reliability study? And have a more informed discussion?
You could. Um, either way, you're gonna have about this same seven-point-five million dollar project. Um, the previous improvements that we've proposed in the last. Two water liability submissions to Eagle have included redundancy across I ninety-four. Um, so one way or another, the, this is something the township will eventually have to readdress is the redundancy across I ninety-four. This is just one option and this could change if needed. Um, the previous improvements did include two separate crossings. Um, where this one does not include any crossings of I ninety-four. This would just be a connection of the existing two dead end water mains that are already out. On Baker and Zeeb.
For Flinton? Um, yeah, I would just ask, um, for the, um, next version of the CIP, if we could have. A beefier project justification. It says it's essential for water system reliability. Um, that sounds pretty important. Um, but what, um, we just heard from our engineer isn't included in this. So maybe citing that study, citing some of the data. So we have a basis for this. Um, Kathy, if it is seven and a half million and if it is a sunhill. If those two things are true, big dollar figure and essential, I would want to see it in the plan because we need to plan, you know, this. Will affect our rates that we'll be looking at in, um, February or March.
Okay, so our next thing is the backflow installation in In Arbor connections. It's not starting yet. If we, um. Need to have board approval for our next fiscal year. We have the Wagner Row booster station generator replacement for FYE, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. It's not started yet. Uh, this is also something that we're voting for and we're looking at like a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, we have a five-yard dump truck share with parks depending on the board approval. So this is something you guys. It wouldn't be to FYE twenty-eight, but this is on your radar for sixty thousand dollars that, um. Our utilities director wants to share with our parks department.
Question, I'm sorry. Her voice, but.
It's not defined here what the justification is. And, uh, this is, okay, the dump truck.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, uh, you know, justification, we have been, um. Just really buying a lot of vehicles and then having vehicles and equipment and saying now we need a building. Um, and I don't want to fall into that. I mean, build, build, build. How often will we use it? What is the operational need? What do we do in the absence of a dump truck? Clearly, things are getting moved around. By whom? So is it? I don't know. Is it cheaper? Is it, just what is the business case or justification? I'm using Nikki's language, business case. Um, it already stuck. Um, it's optional, but strategically beneficial. Christie, I wonder what's the strategy? Um, I, I don't imagine this is a recommendation by our engineer. Um, but I would like to understand more what the strategy is. Of that, because we had the, the same kind of conversation last year of, of needing a, a vehicle. Storage facility. Out here. Um, which we haven't done yet, so.
I may know you next.
Thank you.
We have a rubber tire backhoe FYE twenty-nine.
I, I have the same comments on this, um.
And the next item.
Well, uh, last year we approved a. Bobcat or whatever the name of it is with a. An attachment of a bucket. Um, and now we're buying a whole backhoe. I, I, I mean, I don't. I thought we had that attachment, the bucket attachment to do this work and, um. So I don't know what the, what it's used for.
And, and I would, I would share Kathleen's, um, questions. I'll just say as background, Nikki, it was only four years ago, the township bought a tractor. Last year we found out it's the wrong tractor. We sold the tractor, you get the equipment. And so, um. I want to be extra sure that there is, uh, good research and justification. I, I don't know what is not being moved, Christie. I don't know what heavy materials. Um, I, I don't know that it would be operationally more efficient. I, I don't know what it's. Moved for. Um, it looks like in-house maintenance repairs. Um, it would reduce reliance on outside contractors. I, if, if that is cost-saving. Who's gonna operate it? Do we have the training? I mean, I think John has volunteered. Um, but. But no, quite seriously, I think the, the major thing with water and sewer, um, is. You know, i- if, if we have the expertise, the specialized expertise. We have all of this, the need for everything to bring operations in-house, then it would make sense. But that takes a whole operational. Analysis, which, you know, in last January, we were voted to have a committee set up to look at that, kind of look at these systems and we haven't. Done that yet, so.
Yeah, and speak, though. Go ahead and then I'll speak.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I was gonna actually say, Nikki, we sold the tractor with the. Tractor we bought with what, a hundred and forty hours on it and four years, something.
Barely used.
And it, it had snow removal that we. It had a brush that we just bought for the Bobcat, same.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I do think we've used our new resource more, which I'm happy to see. Uh, and I hope that continues to be the case. But I do have some questions as far as, you know. And, and I'm writing notes for you. I'll, I'll share them with, with you and, uh, with anybody else that's interested. Uh, there's, there's questions here that says you can rely, reduce reliance on outside contractors. I don't know if any were, I think there might be one staff person that has training. I don't know if it's on the right equipment or if it's fully. Uh, appropriate or current. Um, we have risk management concerns. I mean. We have people driving dump trucks and backhoes. There's some additional insurance and burgers comp situations to think through. Doesn't mean you can't do it, just means a question. And then a lot of the things that we've had, uh. To use contractors for have been on nights and weekends and is it more beneficial? Cost-wise for both the customers of the water sewer system and the township to have contractors do that?
Right.
Or pay our employees overtime plus on-call pay. To come in and use our operation equipment, which also needs maintenance and repair on a regular basis. That's why I'm glad that you're here. We're gonna go through all.
That operational analysis has never been done.
Yes. Thank you.
So quick point up, you brought up the utilities committee. Was that what it was? Um, and when, what is the status on that? Because it seems like that was presented to the board a long.
So on January, in January fourth, I don't know. The first week of January of twenty twenty-five, the board voted. Um, to have a committee developed, the utility director, others were gonna. Others were gonna work, um, to try to bring back a committee charge to look at kind of the operations similar to what we did for fire, where we spent a good year or two pulling data, looking at other models, determining how to meet needs. So we're waiting for, um, something to be ready to come back.
Something ready to come back for?
To form the committee.
For a committee, for a committee charge.
A committee charge and members.
Oh, we've never seen it. It hasn't come to the board yet.
Okay. So who who would have that? Those, Brandon has had?
He and I have that information, yes.
Okay. Okay. We go back to Nikki.
Okay, so now we have engineering standards. It's this is something that's been completed in F Y E twenty six. Total cost, twenty seven thousand dollars.
I'm not sure that's completed because I just got an email from the utilities director that said there's been a month to look at this and we will come back if there's any needed changes. So I'm not sure that the cost for this, that would be been.
Right, it's been drafted. It's near completion, but drafted, I think, yeah. I agree. It seems like we've got another three to six months.
Yeah.
Uh, really quickly, just I did go back and look at the minutes of our January fourteenth meeting, remove W S O two, W S O four, W S O five.
And it's been, it's been the top, sorry, just the bottom line it Ryan, it's been the top topic on our upcoming proposed agenda items, establish a committee to study Sadio Utility System as moved on January fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
And it's almost a year, but I think with everything that's being presented, that would be right, um, to get that on onto the packet or into the agenda. Sorry, I'm so tired right now.
Whenever it's ready.
Yeah, sure. But as soon as possible, because there's more and more seems that is coming up. Okay. Um, going back to water. Is it the water meter replacement? Is that where you are?
That's where we are. That's a project that's currently in progress and it runs all the way to twenty thirty. It's a one point eight million dollar project. And you can see the breakdown over each, uh, fiscal year and how much it's costing per year.
Yeah, that's, I'm I'm so proud of the township and the team, utilities team has done a great job on this.
Yeah, and and I can share that it's had real revenue impact. We've gotten some of our very old meters, twenty, thirty years old, that we're getting ten or twelve percent more water usage calculated. And some of these accounts have bills of the tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars a quarter. So it's real substantial revenue as well.
Making a real difference.
Yeah, it helps the customer too, because you can see if.
Absolutely.
Yeah, really helpful.
Okay. And we have a water sewer department utility garage for F Y E twenty seven through twenty eight, depending on board approval. I assume this was also something new, you guys.
Definitely discussed last year. And it was tabled pending, you know, a committee to kind of look at the operations. I mean, the the board's thoughts certainly, you know, probably have changed over the last twelve years. I mean, twelve months.
Yeah, it has changed.
Everything's been exactly the same. Um, I I would say I would be, again, same questions. I mean, you could, you can, I I just feel like this is one part of a a major transformation of how we operate our water and sewer department. Think about if the chief had just said, I need to set the fire station. That's not how we started it. Right? And David knows, is chair of the Fire Services Guidance Committee. It was about, you know, service standards. What are we trying to get? What are we trying to achieve? And then what's the operations and capital needed to get there? Um, I would also wonder where this kind of for me, that's the question, do we need more, you know, vehicle storage? Um, you know, I do think that might be, and if so, I would, you know, think here that Township Hall would make sense. I know last year, um, Brandon was proposing one of the township-owned properties on Marshall or, um, Stabler. Stabler.
Or Stabler kind of.
Yeah, and I I would just say for for me, I I think it's gonna be a big, you know, a lot of growing for this township to manage this building, Fire Station One and Fire Station Two. I would be hesitant to suddenly add a fourth building that we're responsible for.
This is four and a half million dollars on the land that we already own. Well, it doesn't say, presumably where that, wherever that land is.
Mm-hmm, plus staff. Plus whatever staff would be required to bring all the services in house.
What do you mean staff?
Staff to fill the building, to do all the things that the contractors currently do.
Yeah, one of the descriptions says that we're currently heavily relying on contractors in maintenance and emergency repairs. So I think they want to not only build this infrastructure, but also have enough staff out.
So it would be it would be a garage and an office for our utility staff to go offsite, presumably? Or onsite if there's room? The entire utility department? Well, I'm just looking here. Would allow township staff to perform more work in-house, providing, I I I think, I mean, this is something we need to ask Brandon about, right?
Yeah, and I I and that's where I think the operational side of it too. Like, how many more staff would it need? Because when we got into it last year, the discussions, it would be like, oh, do you remember the, um, sewage? We'd start handling sewage. Right? That's contracted out right now. We'd have a sewage pit. You know, I mean, there are regulatory things that would come with a utility barn. I don't know if a utility garage is different. But when I talk about the specialized functions and permits and things, it's just a question, do we really wanna bring some of that stuff in-house? Or do we wanna keep the expertise and liability on a contractor? I don't know.
Yeah, what's the cost difference?
Right, the whole picture.
Yeah.
The operations analysis.
So I'm gonna mention this, and this is anticipatory of, um, the work that you're, you will be doing, um, for a rate study. I don't know that this four point five million was included in the last rate study.
No, it wasn't. This was excluded from the capital plan. And the adopted capital plan amount is what was used for the rate study. That's why I flagged that seven point five Marshall Road. That Marshall Loop, that Marshall Loop. You know, anything that's kind of, that our engineer says is essential, for me, I'm gonna prioritize funding and asking reef takers to pay for it over something that's optional. But that's gonna raise rates. And and I am not, you know, with this, I would be super supportive of having a committee and doing analysis and research to look at how we do our water and sewer. I would be opposed to including a utility garage at this time, um, knowing that this is gonna go into our rate study.
I feel like based having on you guys' input, then, you know, we will have another meeting where we can kind of finalize our capital improvement plan and bring the directors forward that have can address some of these questions that you're asking. Since this was more informational to hear what your feeling is, what your thoughts are, versus we'd probably be here to pass mid uh, directors to talk about these things and the planning, so. Um, I'm hearing the hot topics. So I'll make sure I follow up with the directors and get on the agenda for having them before you to address these concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the township parking lot. Um, as Ryan has pointed out, we would definitely need to do an assessment of TV chargers before starting this parking lot.
Perhaps we could add to this, uh, something like dependencies.
Okay.
So we could keep track of some are linked together, some may not be. If they are linked together, then maybe we can keep track of this on this board.
Thank you. I call it contingencies, but that's the word I was looking for.
Cross-reference.
Morning. Moving towards our, um, other township properties. I just wanna point out that this is actually not a capital improvement, but includes parcel numbers and cash values that could be offered for sale or for use of our parks or preserves. It's kind of just to give you an idea of what we own. And what we could potentially use if there's any thought about having a capital improvement that could include these parcels.
And and I would say too, Nikki, if if you thought it would be better for the board to handle this outside the capital plan, you know, we could also kind of take these pages and dedicate a session. I appreciate Andrea and Gillian and Laura's work on this. Um, but this kind of goes into our our planning, which we've never really done for our township properties, so we could do it at a separate session.
I thought recovery third was a possibility.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's right. Is that?
I like that, because I don't wanna confuse those who are new to the whole capital improvement plan by including items that are actually not a capital improvement. And then they feel like that's the basis of C I P. So we just wanna ensure that everyone's on the same page and that we are being clear and concise in our definitions and what we're doing.
One correction. The just of the Armor Grove company suggested having it converted to a preserve.
Oh, yeah, I have that.
Tomato, tomato.
Armor Grove.
Tomato, tomato.
Having it in a park, not a preserve, it's a preserve and not a park.
That's a dog park.
It's a dog park.
It's a running joke.
Oh, okay.
It's a deer bong problem.
All right, no problem. Okay, so moving on to our next section done by our project manager, um, and that's our H Beck Replacement. It's currently ongoing, as you all know, walking around the building. It's here. We have our Jackson Row Corner, uh, some multimodal improvement phase one. Uh, this is F Y E twenty twenty eight to twenty thirty. Uh, that is listed, and we have engineering and construction of Park Road. We have a Dexter in Arbor Wagner Road Pedestrian Safety that would be, uh, F Y, it's really F Y twenty six. This says that this is in progress or scheduled for an upcoming B O T meeting. So I'm really kind of unclear on this one.
That one got approved at our last.
Yeah, we'll send you an update on that.
But
we're on a, our Wagner Road. So so I I think there's the engineering, these, these things have like, um, kind of two, two, two processes. First, there's the engineering, how much is it, is it feasible to to put a pathway there on this property with the, with the, with the, the land and the, you know, topography and everything? And then we pay for that. And then, okay, here's all the plans. Now, how are we gonna fund, um, the pathways and the bus stops and things like that? So on this one, we did, we did commit to was it a study or the engineering?
The engineering. We'll, we'll center the details, but the engineering for sure.
This is preliminary engineer review of each region side of pathway plus.
I I will just again flag for the board, we need to figure out how we are going to fund Park Road. Are we serious about doing Park Road or not? And we don't have to answer that tonight, but Nikki, we do not have an identified funding source for Park Road. We have a grant for part of it. We have some of the pathway happening. There's all these, um, factors and and probably, um, our engineer and project manager, you know, but we need to to figure this out. And and I would like to either seriously say we're gonna do this and figure out a plan to do it or not.
And I will point out that, um, the engineering for Park Road, um, that plan has never been presented to the board. And that's one of the items I put on the reporting um, for O H M. Um, we paid a boatload of money for that and we've not gotten a review of it.
So good. Kristy, did you get that on your job?
Well, there's, yeah, however, there's change, there potential changes to the pathway. Pathway from the north to the south and Chris Chang, Murphy and O H M, we were discussing this because um, residents and trees and whatnot. And W C R C, there's a roundabout that is going in from the feds, I believe, um, grant or whatever, so that any project along there, they want it all done at the same time, so we don't shut down the road two more times. Um, so that won't be, I think it's twenty seven, twenty eight. We're waiting for, um, I believe W C R C, we're trying to set up another meeting about all of this. Um, there's something about D T E utilities that will, if it's the pathways on the north, then we have to remove D T E or D T will have to change their utilities and they don't like doing that. So there's, there's more to this.
So I I think you just proved my point that I don't have any of that information in O H M needs to present that to the board, so we have some understanding of it.
We, that's the point. And and Kristy, whoever's running point on this, um, I know it's a complex project.
Yeah.
It just is. Okay.
Please make me know.
Thank you.
And let me just quickly ask, are you guys gonna identify a funding source before this upcoming budget season?
So there, it's just general fund is all that's available. And I will just say that again, that's just the reality of this. And so either we're gonna look at the general fund and see if we can afford to do it in the next year or two, or we're gonna say we can't afford it. We're gonna wait until we identify more funding.
Well, we talked about an S A D.
No, oh, sorry, Nikki, what?
Isn't this like an estimated three million dollars?
Well, it's both pathways and roads. And the Road Advisory Committee is working on a presentation. Or we have a little bit, um, and have another presentation to request, um, of of mileage be on the ballot in November of twenty twenty six. Because we do not have dedicated road funding, and if we did, then that would cover potentially cover the road, the paving part of Park Road. Now, we'd have to get the extension of the M E B C grant.
What happened with the consideration of an S A D?
Well, there's who.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever seriously looked at if it legally be possible for Park Road.
Well, the problem with Park Road is there's only three parcels. There's only three parcels. So those three parcels, if we impose, that's not the right word.
Assessed.
Well, so the township can, um, Mariah, what's the word when the township not imposes a special assessment, it implements a special assessment, then the parcel owners, we'd be twenty percent of the signatures, they could stop it. Then it would have to be the area coming back to us, which would be the three parcels, requesting for the special assessment. And well, then they would have to have the brunt of.
And it depends on
A lot of people.
Who's specially benefited?
There's only three.
Well, well, would, we'd have to get legal advice on that, whether Trail Woods would be specially benefited. Would our, our press point, I'm sorry, I don't know the the one on the north side and then the the French Country Estates.
French Country, um, has a, uh, development agreement, uh, that specifically excludes they have any obligations.
I would like to get a legal opinion on this fee, on the feasibility of of if we maybe our assessor and our attorneys, we could look at if this is a possibility for Park Road.
And if what is a possibility?
It's a special assessment for the improvement of the road.
That would.
Well, and for a general, a public road.
Right, John.
And then to special assess only certain people for the whole public to use is that is not the premise of a special assessment. It is to specifically especially benefit the parcel and raise that parcel's value because of the the project.
And the question would be, what's the scope? Wh- what all parcels would be regarded as specially benefited along Park Road?
Not using the road. Using the road, but raising the value of the parcel. Of, uh. Treasure.
Is there a certain section of the road that you're talking about? We can give you the details.
The, uh.
Later.
Especially that is unpaid.
Yeah, the eastern portion as it approaches Z.
Sorry, I would just say, I, I think we're going to be far stretched and we don't have to discuss this much further tonight unless we really want to. I think we're gonna be far stretched to find general fund dollars to come up with a funding shortfall for this.
I agree, I was just.
I, I. I foresee our sheriff's contract is expiring at the end of twenty twenty six and I'm sure they're going to ask for some sort of increase because their costs. But who knows? Um, we are going to have additional things that come up. Yes, we are gonna get a, a, a small amount, small, but several hundred thousand dollars for the D D A here.
By end of the fiscal year.
But this is not going to solve a two billion and change problem. I, I, I just have a hard time getting us to commit to this, but sorry, I'll defer.
Well, and this is informational at this point.
Yeah.
And. This could be a huge conversation.
And but I would say it'd be helpful to get a legal opinion on John's question. I agree with John on that. If it's in the mix and then, and then let's, let's see where we're at. And then if it's not feasible, then you know, we got to figure out what to do with those grants.
Yeah, and I want to make one point on that. Um, when you talk about Arbor Point, that's a condominium project. And so, um, the common areas which completely surround that. Um, could be considered, or I would like an opinion if that could be considered. Um, as participating in a special assessment. Well, in other words, the entirety of that subdivision. The common areas completely surrounded, people have individual lots. But you consider the condominium association instead of individual lots for benefit.
Okay, more to come. That's anyone else has another comment?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, we talked about the Dexter and Arbor, uh, we briefly talked about Woodview Common Shelter.
Question, the bus shelter is like the little aluminum frame, glass enclosure. Or people waiting for a bus.
The origin of this was the development agreement with Woodview had a community benefit going directly to the D D A. Fund four ninety four. And so since the D D A has been dissolved. Um, what I would, um, propose, provided it's in it, you know, we'll defer to our township attorney to make sure it conforms. And to our finance director, but that we would just, uh, simply transfer that thirty thousand to the public transit fund. Um, which would be responsible for, you know, any, any other capital improvements. I know we haven't had much money. In the public transit fund for capital.
So do they have bus stops there now?
No.
I mean, this is a twenty six, twenty seven thing, but. Is there bus service to Woodview? My apologies.
I would ask our transit committee to maybe kind of inform this a little more, Ryan.
And it would be wave.
Okay.
Wave.
Information.
Yes. Yes.
Like.
Okay, then next we're gonna get to our sidewalks. I think we're doing really great on time. I think we're zooming through here. Uh, we got some bigger topics coming, but in our sidewalks, we have the Siobhan Church Road at Oak Valley Drive project. Um. And.
I would ask if we might, we don't decide tonight, but I gotta say the sidewalks. Like this is either a pathway or a sidewalk. And, and I don't care, and I don't care, and we don't have to decide now. What I want to say is, I don't, I am concerned there's not enough money. In the two oh eight fund parks and pathways that for this project. And, and so regardless of what we call it, and I appreciate eligibility for a grant, I get it, we don't need to keep talking about that. What I want to say is I don't think there's enough money in two oh eight. And I don't want to start another pathway at the expense of planting trees and pulling out invasives and doing all this other stuff, which seems to actually be our priority.
Well, however.
And no, I would say a different funding source, John. I would say one oh one.
I think, I think pedestrian safety, I think pedestrian safety is, is, is safer, is more a higher priority than it is.
Fair enough. I would just say then let's fund it through one oh one.
Okay, but the connecting grant, communities grant, can it, that has to be a pathway if I understood.
That's fine.
Okay, and then, um, for this. The grant for the study is a precursor to applying for the grant for the connecting projects. So that's why it has to be worded with pathway and not sidewalk.
I would just propose this get funded through one oh one.
Yeah, okay, we can do that.
What is one oh one?
General fund.
Rather than.
Two oh eight.
Why not some two oh eight if it's a pathway? Because I think what they have in mind is that, that they have a pathway in mind and. I think of a sidewalk as narrow concrete.
We have enough money.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we have enough money. It's not that it's not eligible. I'm just saying, I think we need to back this up with general fund money, John. I don't know. I would defer to Nikki to let us know if we have enough money, but. I, we have this pathway we started and haven't finished. I don't want to start another one.
You're talking about Z?
Yeah, that one. It's almost finished, but.
I'll figure out if I should be calling it a pathway or.
Call everything a pathway that's eligible for my grants.
Yeah.
Good thing called, where however we fund it, yeah.
Making a note.
Beginning of pathways, next page. The big one.
Okay, zero phase five. So with this one, I made a note, um, there seemed to have been some type of discrepancy with our M E D C grant. That was funding this and so we actually had some grant discussions, Gillian and I in a meeting and we're trying with. Uh, Chris is going to get our hands around it. Now this page for a fund two oh eight. Murphy also has it in her packet, but what I did not want to do is takes. Information out that was presented. I wanted to allow the board to see exactly which each director or. Project manager had included. Um, but he, Chris has the right language regarding the grant. We did find it there. It has been an extension. With the help of a supervisor and giving the data and kind of wrapping around what, what we had when we go here. Initially, this grant did expire on September twenty twenty five, but it has been extended beyond that. So. I made a little box down here with a note. I just wanted to highlight and point that out. This is an estimated cost of three point four million dollars, um, of which some of it will be offset by our grant. Yes.
Just, I, I'll just say the, the biggest issue on this project for me is making sure we got the total cost right. I think that three point four might not be the total cost. I think that's just the township share. I would, um, I know you've gotten a memo from Plant Moran. We had done about a year and a half ago. Well outdated, was accurate and so are, um, but my biggest question here is. Could we this time around flag how much of the two oh eight fund balance you estimate we're gonna need to keep? To finish this project. Because that's kind of the question that keeps coming up is, you know, was one to two million, where are we? How much do we really think we need to kind of? Commit in that two oh eight fund balance to finish that.
Can I ask you a question about this? Is this the M E D C, is this the pathway that goes?
Zero, zero five.
No, but it goes to the sweepster and then stops there because we can't get across the parking lot?
At this point, yes.
Yes, this would take us across.
Yes, that's correct.
I think we are going to continue having some more conversation with them. I don't think it's a rock that's immovable at this point. I think.
Okay, next to their open space, uh, preservation fund two three three. I have two different documents in here. Uh, one that was presented and the other one that Darryl volunteered, that's a great job, has also presented with a. What they budgeted as to how much we're gonna spend each year. One is asking for six million dollars. Um, six point two million, the other one is seven point eight million because there are some properties that. Uh, the open space committee plans to acquire, um, next year or the coming years. That they have provided data for in the pipeline. So I wanted to present both documents. And they were going to ensure that we reconcile between the two and get on the same page as to what the real plan is. But based on my conversations with Darryl, I think she has the more stronger sense of what, um, they are planning on doing. So. But I did want to present both.
Thank you for your work, Darryl.
Can I ask you a question? And I'm sorry for that. I don't know the difference. We've got open space preservation and open lands preservation.
That's, that's the point. They, they're, they're duplicative.
Yeah, just take, take this first page, John.
Yep.
And cross them, nope, cross it out and just use the second page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Takes me.
No, I was just trying to be clear.
Yeah, and the other one is by our.
Okay, I think both of them were from me. I have noted, if you recall, um, for some numbers that were coming in. So, uh, because I, I have run off the numbers. So I had two versions. The first one got. Dubai and the correct one is with the seven million dollar.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, so this is the old one that Chris provided and she revised it. So the second.
Yeah, and he, he gave it.
Okay, and the, the page after has her breakdown, um, of what her hands on spending or the, or the. Open space committee plans on spending up to F Y, are you going to?
Any, any questions?
That is why she's here. Wonderful. Okay. Um, no questions, I will keep right on moving. We have roads and, um, our supervisor spent a lot of time working on this, she and I.
Yes, and along with the, the road advisory committee, they were.
Along with the road advisory. And it has a breakdown all the way up to F Y E thirty thirty two and what their recommended, uh, cost are going to be. And if you look in the packet, there are supporting road lanes on the mounts. Twenty twenty six, twenty seven, all the way up to twenty twenty nine, thirty thirty, uh, twenty thirty one. And, uh, there may be some increases due to inflation. However, we just want to make sure we put some numbers for you. If you guys have any questions.
This is great. I want to, um, thank Gillian and everybody for their work. This is the first time we've had a list. And I appreciate the list change, but like budgeted numbers for each year. Um, of kind of what the projected road improvement cost might be each year. So this is really helpful to plan with.
Um, it, it may. It may change and we, because this is earlier than the road commission provides us, you know, we match, you know, so that could change a bit. But we're staying within the, you know, the budgeted amount, um, especially for this first year.
It's gonna be updated and all. Because it would be nice to know if it was like a repave or a milling or a. Or like.
They're, they're all gravel for the first two years unless it specifically says paved and then that would be a seal coat.
And, and I would suggest that.
Okay.
I like that, that detail, but I, I think that might be kind of as a supplement to the capital plan.
I, it's, it's all dirt unless it says.
Gillian, is it possible to get, uh, eliminate the D D A road improvement?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because that's what we wanted to suggest because we're absorbing those and there's. The only thing that needs to be done, um, are seal coating to preserve. Um, because most of them have been done except for North State or.
Yeah.
So if we can just.
Yeah, it's just township roads.
Okay.
We're going over to fire services. Not much more to go on. Um, but we still had a catch, so. All right, moving on now. So we have cardiac monitors with a service plan. It hasn't started yet, four hundred ninety five thousand. This is for F Y twenty eight, F Y E twenty eight through twenty nine. Just to put it on your radar and, uh, you can let me know your thoughts. Uh, replacement of breathing air filling station is not started, seven K and we're still looking for our next budget. Uh, replacement of brush truck is in progress.
And, and all of these Nikki, um, you know, the board, if, if everybody recalls. Fire all the way through number. Um, ten. Was proposed, was adopted by this board last year. So I, I will say I want to thank the fire chief for his work because we're all. Familiar.
Yeah.
With these ten.
And that would bring us, we don't even need to go over it. We could jump down to fire station one parking lot renovation. And that's for F Y eighty twenty eight through twenty nine of four hundred thousand. That's the only thing that it seems to have been asked for.
Yeah, and that is, yep.
Um. I, I, we expect the ladder truck one, uh, seven, five, that's still.
Being built.
It's still on progress. I always had a meeting today that we should, we're expecting in an October of next year. We have a grant that is going to be reimbursable to us to offset that expense.
Thank you.
Just picture the down line, be able to see that.
Oh, I'm gonna get a ride on it.
Yep.
You're gonna take a ride. All right, we're moving on now to, this was Murphy's submission. I do want to point out. For our parks that, that she did make an update, I think, that went out today at fifteen, a last minute change or she wanted me to make note of it. Um, I just got it today and I don't know if you have it in your packet or don't have it in your packet.
No, it, it was, it was emailed out, but I think it was related to the, the tree.
Yeah, it was with the tree plant, but we're redoing that. So another, um, last minute change around. Don't have it in front of me. Okay, so with that being said, zero pathway phase five, um. F Y E twenty seven. Total cost, this runs all the way through F Y E twenty eight, three point four million dollars. Uh, again, have any questions, let me know. We have the, uh. There's no estimated cost for this, but lithium straw water management, illegal species landscape, there's zero costs associated.
It's contribution of twenty five thousand dollars. So that's why you don't see.
Yeah.
Developer, yes.
And, and it's a developer really in kind contribution of twenty five thousand dollars worth of the development in that. So. Yeah, it's kind of an odd one.
So there's two Z road path, uh, Z road phase five to, you just, um. Yeah, that's. This is what you were.
Yeah. Chris submitted one, um, and Murphy submitted it also under her. I, I don't know for sure how they're dividing up the duties between that. As him being the project manager and.
I think for her because it falls under allegedly her fund. But Chris.
Yeah.
Manages the.
If you could help Nikki kind of.
Yeah.
Please forgive me. I don't have the full understanding that I'm getting there. It's day sixteen. Okay, so we got the township hall park playground base two. Um, for fifty K that says it's completed basically, um. The site will not be able to be installed until spring twenty twenty six. Uh, so there's still some leftover pending items that need to be done, but it's majority needed. We got the town hall park playground phase three, uh, which is F Y E twenty seven. We got the town hall park playground phase three, uh, which is FYE twenty seven for fifty thousand dollars. We got the town hall park reservoir for a hundred thousand dollars, um, for FYE twenty seven.
So this is coming year.
Yeah. There's been a.
There's only so much in the, in the file.
And then we have a tractor with attachments, uh, FYE twenty six.
Purchased.
Purchased. Completed, stated. And then moving on to town hall vehicle storage barn. I think they've seen this before or have not.
So this was a, a, a approved.
Cancel.
So, yeah, canceled. So when we went through the training, canceled wasn't an option that was suggested. It was just kind of like, what's the status? But it it sounds like Murphy's recommending that the board not build a barn. Um, but I would like more information on that, Christie, because we spent so much time last year talking about, you know, saying that there's inefficient space, um, that there's lack of space for assessing, that there's lack of space for utilities and parks. So Christie, you manage our space here. I would appreciate your kind of
Okay.
assessment of, you know, and our vehicles too, like if we need vehicle storage or if they're okay outdoors.
Same, but before, right?
No. We'll rest faster.
It's snowing though. Yeah, I think we're almost done, um. Yeah, we are, um, pretty much, yeah, we're almost done. So just keep it on time so we can get out, um, parking road, park road parking lot, um, FYE twenty seven for seventy five K. Current status, construction will be completed on this project with engineering permitting and construction observations. I don't know if you have any questions regarding that.
No, that's uh, that's something coming up this year, next year, for the uh, five hooks.
Spring.
Growth.
That's still in the.
Yeah, it was just, I I had asked the department heads to just give us an update on the current status in the same form, but it won't appear in the file, but just as a reminder about the progress that they've made if you'd ask for it.
We have the Sio church road canceled, um, Parker Road West Wetland Observation Deck Engineering.
I'd be fine taking that out if that's what Murphy wants to do. I know it was kind of a, it was her, her kind of idea. It sounds like she explored it and found it's not as feasible.
I don't know where people would park.
But there, but it's, it's, so let's take it off. Federally protected or wet, like something, something that's why.
She's recommending that we remove it. I would agree with her.
How, if we build a deck, where are people gonna park in the ride away?
I'm recommending we not build it and eliminate it from the plan.
It's fine.
It seems like that's what Murphy's recommending.
I agree. It says it's not feasible at the time. She already got one victory tonight.
Hey, give it to.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so moving on, we have our, um, Dan, I know you are too late. Let me just see the long comic relate, right?
We still have a couple hours.
We have Van Kurler and Dexter here on walking path, um, for FYE twenty seven in progress for seventy five K. And we have Milton Creek Bridge, it's long preserve, this is FYE twenty eight. This is to put on your radar for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
A bridge for a hundred and fifty?
I don't know where that is.
Okay, it sounds exciting. I would guess it might cost more. Okay.
Pedestrian bridge, that makes a difference.
Okay. You're witty for, so it's late. It's awesome.
Over the portion, do we, we must own land on both sides?
Yes, we do. Small, there's an island. Mill Creek goes on one side and there's a, a friend of Mill Creek that comes around, so there's an island that we own. So this bridge, we get to that. Right now, I think there are stones that you have to walk on.
Interesting.
Now, those stones just happen to fall in the right spot. So it's not exactly legal, it just happened to fall.
Mother nature at work.
Mother nature at work, yeah, we got it.
Okay, so now we have that and then we also have Liberty Pond Nature Area Pathway Improvement. It's not started yet and it's in private, uh, budget season for sixty five K. Okay. Any intentions?
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
Well, we have West Sio Preserve Rest.
Reinforcement.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're just late. Thank you guys so much.
And that's for, you approved some of that tonight, I'm concerned.
Oh, right. Now here's where the change takes place. Um, I did get a chance to talk to Murphy tonight. Uh, she broke out Liberty Pond Nature Area Reinforestation, um, that's canceled. And then we had, you make sure I'm looking at the right one, and that's a old one, I wanna, we'd spot all of her challenges. Okay, so we got West Sio Preserve, she broke that out in what's she called, part one, part two, and part three.
Auto boss.
Okay, so part one is a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars and it's on track. She's providing an update. This was in FYE twenty five. Does that mean our original plan? So part phase two is a hundred thousand dollars and this is gonna be FYE twenty twenty seven. Um, she says she had to break it down in phases, uh, cause we will most likely renew the contract with Wild Type Nursery in twenty twenty six. Does this ring any bells?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Okay, we have part three, West Sio Preserve, uh, part three, a hundred thousand dollars, FYE twenty twenty eight. This will take place in the fall of twenty twenty seven and will most likely renew the contract with Wild Type Nursery in twenty twenty seven.
This West Sio Preserve Reinforestation, we budgeted beginning of last year for thirty thousand out there. We increased the budget after the special meeting on parks for fifty five thousand. Um, we know, we we thought it then might be a hundred and nineteen and now it sounds like it's gonna be three hundred and nineteen. So I'm just tracking that, you know, our estimate of a year ago.
Yes.
Was a sixth of what the, that is.
We didn't know, we didn't know.
Yeah, which is fine, um.
Where's that meeting? We got Liberty Pond Nature Area Reinforestation, a hundred thousand dollars and twenty twenty nine, FYE twenty twenty nine.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have our Van Kurler Preserve Reinforestation, sixty K, twenty thirty, um, and that is it.
Okay, great job pulling this all together, Nikki. Yes.
Nikki, that's the trial by fire to give you a, of just moving, isn't it?
Yes, absolutely, and I am still being tried by the fire.
And I I would ask, um, if the board might consider making a motion um, to adopt the changes, slight changes to the board approved timeline as recommended by Nikki, Christie, and me.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, I'll let you say aye.
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 It passes. Thank you, Nikki. It's been a pleasure working with you and and I know.
Maybe more times.
Oh, yes, but really, um, you you just come on board and then you have all of this thrown at you and you have just done an amazing job and, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, doing a great job. And next time this is on the agenda, it will be under unfinished business earlier in the agenda and ask that we try to not have a big fat report right before.
Okay.
Yeah, so how do you guys wanna see that? Do you just have the directors that you have follow up questions come forward to answer? Like, do you want to get around the capital improvement plan?
I mean, I, I think as needed, I mean, I I prefer to you and Christie, which ones are needed. I I think what's gonna be really important for the next one is to have the timeline of like the year, like that we're doing all these, rolling it up and what's feasible, just understand what do we actually have the fund balance to do.
Yeah, so now you can get in here into the budget.
I I think others, if we understand which one, we just don't have fund balance for it. I I think that quickly weeds some things out.
Take some things off the table.
You know, if we're spending thirty five million dollars in uh, the general fund and the general fund only brings in two million dollars a year and has fund balance of eight, then yeah, we're gonna need to announce some things pretty quickly.
Because I do think, you know, with the capital plan, Nikki, it's like that balance of how much should it be a wish list? Well, don't give us because it's just, it's not a good use of anybody's time.
Okay, Nikki, um, our, our next um, agenda item is the adoption of policy on utilization of government consulting services. And earlier we sat down with Chief Hood and Chris Chang and we talked about grants and you had mentioned um, about working with our lobbyist and if you could share that, I think that would be helpful, it just a real short.
Yeah, I'll make it really brief. So part of our conversation, we're trying to wrap our arms around the grants. Granted, I am new and I think as a past practice, we had not listed all of our grants in the budget as a revenue source, which then it gets away from us in terms of understanding what our financial resources really are. And so as a result, we want to ensure that we're including that in the budget as well as the conversation was raised that perhaps we may have a grant writer to go after more uh, grant funding for some of these lofty ideas that we have with pathways and um, whatever else it is in the pipeline or how we can better utilize the consultants that we currently have, i.e. our lobbyists. And one of the conversations I have from past experiences that we use our lobbyists to then give us before the proper officials so that they can help on our behalf with certain grasses coming in the pipeline or things that may be associated with what your interests are, like how with the fire department and building this new uh, facility as well as how we have a, a grant from the MEDC regarding the fire truck. Like whatever it is that you guys are interested in, then we can have that be tasked to our lobbyists to see what's out there, getting before your congressmen or senators or government officials or Department of Transportation's and roads, because I know roads has a lot of lofty ideas that they wanna do and fund. And maybe we can offset some of that um, expenses based upon grant funding that comes in. So I was told that it's gonna be legitimate for the board, whether or not to renew our lobbyists, but it sounds, it's based on those conversations we had earlier that we haven't tasked them exactly with what we were trying to do. From what I've heard earlier was that you guys got the MEDC grant because the lobbyist put before the former supervisor and connected the dots so that we can get those funds to uh, have a grant for the fire truck. With that being said, uh, was a question raised as to whether or not we're actually utilizing the lobbyists properly by giving them marching orders and what the goals of the township truly are and holding them accountable to achieve those goals so that we can get funding to offset some of the ideas and expenses that we have coming. So that was kind of the conversation we had. It was proposed that we may not have been doing our own proper due diligence to task the lobbyists with what our interests are so that he can produce the results. So we're grading him when we have it, when we gave him a full task to do.
And also our current lobbyist um, focuses on Lansing, doesn't do federal advocacy.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so that's a.
You may wanna get some more far reaching arms because it seems like maybe the Department of Transportation can help you at the federal level or there may be some goals that you have, the roads commission on a federal level that can assist you on in the township of what you're trying to do to not necessarily have to have a mis- village or a special assessment to fund some of these things. We can get a grant to offset the projects that you guys have in mind.
We shared about Pontiac.
Well, City of Pontiac, uh, they're, they actually have more grants than the general fund. Like the project for their general fund, grants is a larger project, it's like two or three times the size of the general fund, so.
I would support contract, I mean, with like a good grant writer and somebody who does federal lobbying, but you gotta.
Those are two, two different things.
They are.
Yeah.
So we have talked about in our group, the fact that we haven't utilized GCSI fully in the process. I mean, we had discussions about.
So now we talked about even perhaps happening like a committee, uh, there was conversations as to whether or not would, so we have a grant writer on a full time or part time basis. I said I would not support a part time grant writer at this time unless the need or demand would show that we have the work for them to do versus hiring someone. We haven't, we we have the same problem you have with the lobbyists there, you know. There's two different types of people who can do grants. One, they may just do nothing but writing the grant where somebody else will go search for the grant for you and they may not always be the same person with that same skill sets. We just wanna be mindful of what is really our goal before we start like adding a job in the budget and try to figure those things out. And there are organizations, which was brought up in the meeting today, um, one being your engineers that will provide grant writing services for you for free because it, you guys have a shared interest. Cause if you can get the money for the grant, then that pays them and their organization to do the work. So we should exhaust all resources before spending any money in that endeavor until we just have to.
I know.
That was the conversation.
Yeah, there's also grant writers, I think, who, you know, will, you know, work on contract, you know, and if they get the grant, it's a certain fee, if not, it's another fee.
Yeah, and we have to be careful with that too because depending, we would have to pay them probably out of the general fund, depending on the language of the grant, because whenever you go out for a grant, you're telling them how you wanna spend the money and maybe an administrative fee may or may not be a part of that uh, grant. So with that being said, you know, there are ways that we can work that and figure that out from a budgeting standpoint.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks, Nikki. Nikki, drive safely. Sorry for the late night.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for your time.
Be careful, it's not me. I'm not coming into any more winter meetings.
So let's move on to our last agenda item before um, public comments and adjournment. O two, uh, downtown reported trustees, adoption of policy on utilization of government consulting services incorporated. Um, this is prepared by trustee Reiser and.
And and Noel and and Reed, so um, you know, what we are recommending is that there's a contract, a retainer agreement that uh, our counsel of attorney went through, redlined. So there's an updated retainer agreement. I don't know that everybody has it, but it's essentially getting rid of uh, where we indemnified them, that's gonna, that's gonna be excised. And then there's this policy that on the, on how we're going to use GCSI. Of course, um, could be a different lobbyist if the, if this board wants to go with a different lobbyist in the future, but assuming that it's GCSI, cause we've had GCSI and they've got some items in the fire for us now, I've been working for it now. We're recommending to continue with GCSI. Essentially, what we're recommending is a, a membership, um, uh, 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 of this GCSI committee uh, of up to three township officers as determined and appointed by this board. And then for a one year term, uh, with no limit on consecutive terms and that the township's director of operations, even though that's, I know that Christie's serving as that, uh, so that could be, you know, misplaced with the office coordinator, but she'll office, she'll also serve on the committee in an ex officio capacity and that's recommended so that um, she kinda knows what, what uh, GCSI is working on and keep, keep, keep her in the loop. Um, the committee is charged uh, with uh, being in regular contact with the Sio's lobbyist, apparently John Horford, and uh, serve as the township's liaison uh, regarding legislative matters and funding opportunities. Rats are tied from GCSI what legislative grant based or other funding opportunities may exist at the local, regional, state, or federal levels and communicate those to the board of trustees. Uh, and then Melissa from this board, then communicate to GCSI the categories of expenditures, the board, uh, the board, uh, wants, uh, G C S I to pursue, uh, relying and, 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 and in part on that, uh, our capital improvement plan for guidance. These are the things we wanna do, big, big ticket items. Of course, there's gonna be some things that might come up that are not in our capital improvement plan. But those were the, uh, those were the opportunities are. And then we spelled out some, some examples. Fire department, infrastructure and training, park road improvements, paving pathways, crosswalks, et cetera. Pedestrian crosswords, cross crossings rather, Zeb Road, Jackson Boulevard, Miller Road, South Church, et cetera. Drainage issues such as a Liberty Road, um, maybe, uh, maybe even, uh, Zeb Road and Park Road where you have drainage issues over there. Enhancing SIO Township's water and sewer infrastructure. Monitoring and remediating diox, Saint P F O S and other pedestrian connectivity with other municipalities along Dexter Road and Wagner, SIO Church, uh, H R D potentially. Road resurfacing and grading, land preservation, um, development and improvement of local parks and other categories is set forth in our capital improvement plan. And then to solicit from the, this board and to communicate with the G C S I the legislative directives. So could that, it could be, uh, the, um, bill of power, it could be these data centers, zoning laws, revenue sharing, things like that. And then, uh, you know, affordable housing, low incomes, what was the state doing with respect to housing? And then, uh, kinda social and economic justice issues as those arise in the, um, the state legislator. And then one of the things that, uh, that, uh, that John Horford could do if we're interested is conduct meet and greet opportunities for candidates with state, uh, for state and regional offices such as a governor, attorney general, secretary of state, the senate and house reps. So that they could get to know, uh, SIO reps and what our interests are. So we're recommending that this policy be adopted, um, we're recommending that the contract be, uh, renewed. Um, and, uh, I, I don't, I don't wanna speak for the committee, although I already have. But I don't wanna speak exclusively for the committee. Uh, and Kathy and David, if you have anything to add, please do so.
I don't have anything to add. You've done a good job.
I'd be open. Question note, does G C S I have a federal branch? No.
Not that I'm aware of.
That, we've talked about that.
No, you'd use probably a federal lobbyist.
Yep.
Not a, not an engineering. My, that would be my take.
I, no, I was thinking of grants, I'm sorry.
That's fair. Yeah, that's okay. That's a good.
Got the ideas, good point.
Um, yeah, so thank you all for your work on this. I was wondering, um, if we can split the issue. Um, I, I was wondering if we can split the issue of the, or if necessarily it goes together, cause I like the, the policy, the committee, a few tweaks to that. But I was wondering if we can, um, generalize it, you know, beyond G C S I. You know, if we have, you know, somebody doing federal lobbying.
Well, we hadn't talked about that.
Okay, so the proposal is for, is all in one, is this contract with G C S I, this policy and this committee?
Yeah, that's what the, that's what the proposal is.
Yeah.
If there's.
Yep, that's what the charge was.
Oh, okay. And so I, I was just asking, I said, I, I, I would be inclined with a few tweaks to, to support the policy and the committee, um, probably not the contract at this time. Um, so that's where I'm at. But I don't wanna get into details if, if there's not majority support for splitting the question. It sounds like the question is the policy committee.
I mean, no, there, there could be. Are, are you saying let's just have a support for how to, let's, let's have a policy on how to use our lobbyists? Irrespective of who it is, G C S I or other, otherwise, and then, and, and, I mean, is that kinda what you're getting at?
Yeah, a policy.
Lobbying policy and then who are we gonna use?
A policy and a committee, you know, generally, you know, but because I think that this is trying to solve a problem that we've had for many years, which is, um, you know, trying to get really kind of representative communication of like the issues. You know, rather than having like one or two of us just sit down with our lobbyist and poof. We have a grant for Park Road and no other plan to finish it, for example, you know? And, and so this is really, really valuable, I think. I am, I am still, and, and I, I would like to tweak this and support this. I will say I am still concerned about G C S I in particular as our lobbyist. And so if there's not support to split the question, we don't, we don't have to and I'll vote against it. But I, I do really appreciate your work cause I think that there's a lot of value in having a committee subject to O M A. That's, that's, you know, a few of us and the operations director communicating this stuff.
Yeah, so, um, if it's not G C S I, who would it be?
I don't know.
Sorry, I, I, you, you did call me, my apologies.
No, um, I have, um, I like your idea. Um, but I, I also, well, yeah, there's two things here. So we have this ad hoc committee. Why not change it to policy on utilization of lobby, lobby firm, lobby.
Uh, township lobbyists?
Well, I was gonna suggest that there was support, but it doesn't.
And also, but that doesn't mean that we just need G C S I. Or a, an, another one, we could have one for state and one for federal.
Yeah, any lobbying.
Possible. And that's what the committee would figure out for us.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I was thinking that the policy would be on a utilization of any township lobbyist, so it'd kinda be generalized. I, I would just make a, a friendly suggestion on the G C S I committee that it, we just say, you know, it'll be three, three township officers appointed by the board plus the director of operations. I would say, I don't think it's necessary to say shall also serve on the committee in ex officio if we name that it's the director of operations. Unless you're concerned or if you just want the person, I mean, cause by saying director of operations, ex officio is sort of redundant, no?
No, I, I mean, that means they're, they wouldn't have a vote, but they would be out of respect to that, to that role, they'd be there.
You know what? Ex officio doesn't mean they wouldn't have a vote. Ex officio means that they're there by virtue of their title. And you're already naming their title. So it's, it's, it's like of their office, of their title.
If you wanna scrap in an ex officio capacity.
But if you just want them to staff and not have a vote, you could just say the committee would be staffed by the operations director.
Oftentimes the ex officio does not vote.
But that's not what ex officio means.
Maybe that's the way we've done it.
You know.
To serve.
That's not what it means.
It's a, it's function of their.
By virtue of.
Yeah, yeah, but that, and they do not vote. That's the way I've seen it done.
I don't, I don't know how much voting there's gonna be doing when we're talking about a lot.
I know.
I don't care whether they vote or not. I usually.
Yeah.
I, I'm not gonna get hung up on whether Christie has a vote.
I know. It's just if you say that they're a member, no, I know. It's just if you say that you're a member, is their quorum, it, you know, you just you trigger those things. That's why I'm saying if you just want them to staff it, you should just say staff it.
And shouldn't our project manager be included?
I don't think he needs to be.
Can show up as, as staff.
I mean, that's where.
Have support.
That's where.
Yeah, Chris will bring in who she needs to, case by case.
Well, and isn't it operations director now that, yeah, O A or D, D O O?
I'd be a scriptor.
I.
Okay.
You know, you guys know what I mean. Um, um, so, so, um, I guess I could bring this back or we could.
No, I mean.
We could, we could say instead of the G C S I committee could just, it just could be the ad hoc lobbying committee or the township lobbying, yeah, or the lobbying committee.
And it wouldn't be ad hoc, right?
Yeah, the G C S I.
Like the lobbying.
So, so the township lobbying committee or the township.
I, I like that lobby advisory committee.
I, I sent it to Christie on Microsoft Word, so it's easily changed.
Excellent. But, and sure, it would be LAC, would be the acronym. So lobbyist advisory.
Advisory committee.
Yeah, I don't think we should, no. I like the committee charge. I wonder if we should, um, it's, it's explicitly call out, you know, committee shall rely on the township's capital improvement plan, tree plan and any other adopted plans of the township. The only thing you're missing is tree plan.
Why, why do we separate tree plan from the capital improvement? Happen.
Our ordinance, it's because of our ordinance.
Well, we have an ordinance for L P C. We have an ordinance.
Well, we have an ordinance that makes us create a capital plan and we have an ordinance that makes us create a tree.
But the tree plan, we know we wanna plant trees. The capital improvement plan is kinda all over the board. I mean, but you know, I, um.
But I, I don't feel strongly. I, I would say if we create this committee here, you know, per our policy, it'll be subject to the O M A, which I think is fine and good. That's just why I wanted to get clear on members.
And I, and I don't know that it should be. I don't know that a, that a phone call to John Horford about, what, what do you have should be, should be a public meeting and a public notice, cause sometimes these things come up. I, I, I just.
Yeah, a phone call is not a meeting.
I have, I'm sorry?
A, a phone call wouldn't be a meeting.
But we could discuss, John, is not not having the committee subject to the O M A when we had our meetings. I, I'm not talking about phone calls.
Yeah.
Just our meetings because sometimes it's simpler to facilitate a quick meeting among three people and not have to go through all the requirements of the O M A.
Then per our, oh, per our other policy, this needs to be explicitly accepted.
Yeah, it should be, cause what we don't wanna say is, hey, we just heard from Horford that there's money for parks and then next thing you know, Ann Arbor Township, Pittsfield Township, Dexter, all other people are.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying if what you're trying to do is not have this subject to the O M A, it needs to be explicitly called out in this. Because we, we adopted a committee charge that says any committee, that's all committees established by the board are subject to the O M A unless explicitly accepted.
So notwithstanding where other, other committees say this should not be, um, I guess.
Subject to O M A, really.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Un, un, unless, unless required by law, or by state law.
Well, it's not.
I know, that's why I said, that's why I said unless, it wouldn't be.
And regular reports.
If there's no requirements.
I think the regular reports would be important too. And if it's not gonna be subject to.
Well, and I had something on the reporting, reporting, and I, and I, I would, I would propose reporting to the board of trustees, uh, the, the lobbying committee shall update the SIO township board of trustees regarding uh, the lobbyist's activities on behalf of SIO township on a bimonthly basis, on a quarterly basis, something like that. So, so.
Regular, yeah.
Or regular basis, however.
At least monthly.
Well, know that we're always gonna need to do it monthly.
Yeah, at least quarterly, quarter, yeah.
So, um, these are probably beyond scripters errors, but it sounds like we're coalescing regarding an approach, at least with respect to a policy. Do you want me to bring it back for the, for consent, uh, 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 and then we can vote for the twenty-third?
I think that'd be good to get it cleaned up. I, I would say if it's not, not gonna be subject to. Um, I feel a little less comfortable with the idea of three. So we've got three of our officials and the operating director.
Should it be two?
What's wrong with four people?
There, there's nothing wrong with four people. I'm just saying if it's not gonna be subject to O M A, that's a.
It's that, it's that, Jessica's, I think Jessica's point is.
I'm, I'm just saying.
The more people you get of our, of the group together.
It's gonna look like.
That are working on something that I'm public view, it doesn't.
Good, yeah, meetings.
It doesn't.
There, there could be.
No, I get, I get it. It's gonna be sub quorum. I don't care if it's only two. It could say two. Would, would, would you feel better with two? And then I can.
I just feel like this is, seems like more of a liaison issue. It seems like more of a liaison with our lobbyist, does it?
Yeah.
I didn't mean it all. It was funny.
I don't know, Jessica, sometimes I think you're, you complicate this.
Well, I, I also. No, and that's fair. That's fine, Kathy. I also think that part of what we've struggled with is the lack of transparency of one or two board members meeting with our lobbyists and bringing us.
I know, yeah, I know. It's why we have this committee.
Right, I know. It's, I know.
But that's, that's what we're trying to solve is the transparency.
Um, I'm fine with the three and then the director, there has to be, there are operations director or the project manager, somebody that is here every day that is operations director. At everything. Um, and if it's just, it's four, as long as another board member doesn't show up, we're fine. Are you okay with it, Christie?
Yeah, I'm, I would only caution that I don't want all the work to flow to the director, the operations.
So far, so good.
Nothing created yet.
I know, that's what I'm saying. She's saying, so far they haven't.
We haven't.
I've been.
And work has occurred, Jessica.
I, I know, I'm saying that, thank you.
No, okay. So are we good with this and the extras that we added and the changes?
I think John was saying that.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna bring it back and I'm gonna put something about not subject to, you know, but any tax and I'm gonna say reporting to the, I'm gonna do something about reporting and that's going to say quarterly basis and I have that. Yeah, something, I'm, I'm just gonna say consulting services, uh, township consulting services.
Lobby.
Or do you want me to just say lobby?
Lobby, lobby.
Okay, cause.
Lobby, lobby committee.
So I'm gonna, okay, all right, and I'll run it past you folks and then I'll, uh.
And then the board will adopt, adopt the charge on consent and then appoint members at the next meeting.
That's, that's one thing. Now.
Isn't it gonna be the three of us?
Yes. So we'll put.
We'll put.
Good night. So that's a second, yeah, just, it's the second motion though, cause this we want to.
Do they, they be appointed to serve, uh, for the first year or whatever? Is one-year terms okay or do you want us to be consistent with our, with our, with our?
One-year terms is fine.
I think one year is fine. But I just think there should be a separate board action to.
I'm gonna, I want people, so you want two, two things, approval and then the appointment. What, no, what about G C S I versus Miller Canfield, Dyke and Magassett or some other?
I don't know enough about the others. I would just say this contract as presented, I would not support G C S I. Um, because of all the reasons we've talked about, the, the conflict, you know, that came about with the Woodview Commons driveway. The way that John presented the little issue around, um, immigration, which I thought was a big issue and every year the seven percent of the, our payment actually going to lobbying. It's not for debate. I've said this before. I just want to know, is there somebody better out there?
Could you do some research on that?
I, I could do some research. Has anyone done any research?
No.
Okay.
We still wanna do this for a year and during that year, you could look into.
I am happy to look for more qualified, um, lobbying, um, for sure. And I'm, I'm happy to do that. I will say though, I do think with this budget cycle, I will be also, you know, proposing some, you know, consultants and, you know, supportive of some staffing changes because we, we just need to step up our game overall. I think this lobbying is part of it, but I think grant writing is part of it and project management is part of it.
But you say more qualified, G C S I is.
I wasn't criticizing G C S I, but I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm just saying our holistic approach. Like if what we're really going for is federal funding, we need to look at that. If what we really need to be doing is grant writing, we need to do that. So we need to do it all. I acknowledge.
Ryan, did you hear your?
But we need to be strict.
Um, I was just gonna state for the same reasons previously mentioned on the record. I also am not in favor of having G C S I in favor of a modified version. Subject to review of this proposal. I, I appreciate the work being done.
But so what good is a policy if we don't have a lobbyist?
John?
Well, I think it's, I think it's a great first step and, and we have three-step process. We have, once we, once we do the two motions in the next meeting, then we can go out and we can, uh, bring ideas for lobbyists and.
And we all have relationships with elected officials. I mean, there's, yeah.
When, when, I am not comfortable establishing a committee to so, single source. The whole purposes of the committee is to, uh, uh, employ G C S I. I, I would be, um, the committee should, I believe, should do the research of what are.
I'd support that.
I, I mean, we wouldn't. I, I mean, we wouldn't accept that from any of our department heads that. I'm doing this because I wanna give money, I want to employ this particular entity.
That's not why I wanna do it, but I feel like we've dragged our feet. We've spent a lot of time on this, and. It's time to move on, and maybe we start doing some research over the course of the next year. See what else is out there, but let's go ahead and go with GCSI. They have a proven track record. They've done a lot of good for us. It's gotten a lot of money for us.
I just don't like every business practice.
Okay.
No, could that be part of the committee is? To also research other firms, and we still need a federal.
Maybe, maybe, maybe we do, maybe we don't.
We don't know. Oh, right, that's what I mean.
But, and the, your business practices, isn't that what a lobbyist is? A hired gun, what can you do for me? We wanna, we wanna be a player. I mean, I mean, that's kind of what they do.
They, 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 I, I don't, I don't wanna get back into, I will just say, they were not representing us.
Yeah.
When they didn't disclose their conflict of interest with Woodview, that, that there's a million dollars. Going straight to the, and John, John's boss came and she apologized, and I get it, it's like, sorry, I get it.
John didn't know.
But John's boss knew. It, it's GCSI. We're not hiring John, we're hiring GCSI. I'm not, yeah, this is not about John.
Okay, should we, uh, right?
Accompany.
So we're kinda tabling this until the next week, is what I'm thinking.
Actually, no, you could, you could take the vote on, you wanted a contract, the motion? You, you're proposing a two-year contract?
No.
It's, he said two in the.
Yes, yes, y- yes, and if that should be shorter, I would look at something else. Maybe we make it to the end of twenty twenty six.
This contract is presented by GCSI? Yes?
No, it's she, by, uh, attorney think.
It was their model though, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, would, would somebody please let them know that we are not a charter organization and they put that in their language?
That happens a lot.
It's disconcerting.
I know, it happens a lot.
Okay, it's disconcerting that someone we are fa, hiring for expertise doesn't know what our township is.
There's a, there is a lot of.
The road, it barely does it to us.
There's a lot of paperwork out in the world that says sign of charter township.
So we were for a while. And at the state level, there's some database that it's still stuck in.
Absolute title that issues it a lot.
But yes.
Okay, then if, if we have to fix it every time, then so be it.
Didn't even notice it. It's in one of the paragraphs, right? It's buried in there somewhere.
You could add a sentence to that agreement that they must use eighty percent of their, uh, of their monthly retainment on lobbying services to prove it, and I might consider supporting it.
Me too. If they actually do more than seven percent of what we pay them on lobbying.
Force, force the issue, give them a percentage and see if they come back and wanna negotiate, and it's something reasonable, like. I consider something seventies or eighty percent reasonable. I understand they have some overhead and expenses.
But we're paying for.
Not ninety three percent. Not ninety three percent overhead. That's just, that's, that's abhorrent. That's worse than some of the charities.
What do you think about the money they've already gotten for us?
Wonderful. Can I, can I ask where we are procedurally with respect to agenda item?
Well.
O two.
Sounds like you're gonna bring back a couple things for consent on the twenty third.
But, but I don't know that a GCSI contract is something that would be, I think that'd be pulled from, from that. And if that's to be the case, let's just vote on GCSI right now.
That's my.
Loser draw.
I, I, I suggested that.
So here, the motion, where to go?
To adopt, to adopt the, so it would be to adopt the, we're going, it will be to maybe table the proposed. Uh, or postpone the proposed policy on utilization of lobbying services. Uh, and, and that'd be, and to expend thirty-three thousand dollars monthly. On GCSI through December thirty-first, twenty twenty, twenty, so I will make that motion.
Split the question.
Yeah, please.
Motion to split the question.
Yes, I, I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna, I move of that, uh, Scioto Township. Expend thirty-three hundred dollars monthly on, uh, GCSI, uh, for lobbying services through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Well, that's, you just expanded that to three years.
Twenty twenty through twenty twenty-six. Twenty twenty-six, thank you. Twenty twenty-six, thank you. Twenty twenty-six. I was just reading the amount of money. So.
May I ask a clarifying question? To, to expend, so, so that would be a contract for term of.
One year. Yeah, it's actually one year, one year and a month, but one year, but ten. With billing to occur the first month. Yeah.
That would be nice.
Four years for a sick date.
Yes.
Nine.
The nine.
Or eight, or whatever.
So December ninth, twenty twenty-six.
December thirty-first.
December thirty, thirty-first.
We want them to change to a regular.
First of the month.
Regular invoicing cycle.
Of twenty twenty-six, John, is that your motion?
Uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, through next year. From now to next year, yep, that is my motion.
Support.
Roll call vote, please, third point out.
Riser?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
April?
No.
Flintup?
No.
Grant?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes for three.
And now we're bringing back four. Do I need to, do I, do I need to postpone or just kinda let it, let it drop and bring it back?
Bring it back.
Got it. Clear.
Okay.
Or consent.
Oh, he was asking about the other, uh, follow-up items like the.
Yeah, no, those are independent. You can bring those back.
Yeah.
That's our plan, yeah.
Okay.
I will comment.
Oh, yes, please, um. This is the time for the members, the, the public to speak to the board of trustees for up to five minutes on any matter, and the room has cleared except for.
Go on online.
There's somebody raised that hand.
Don't worry about that. First off is Rob Pattinson, followed by Paula Gloversen. Go ahead, Rob.
Hi, everyone. Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township President. Just wanted to let you know that, um, I talked to Dr. Wright after his presentation. And I asked him if, um, eight hundred gallons a minute could pull dioxide from the southeast area of that. Six thousand foot radius up to the, to the northwest. And he wasn't sure if, uh, if that would indeed do it, um. Uh, but, you, you know, the, the modeling for that would be extremely extensive, and so he wasn't. He didn't think so, but he wasn't certain. Of course, he couldn't say that, um, because the, the testing for that kind of stuff would be very, um. Uh, involved. So I just wanted to let you know that, uh, that was his answer to my question out in the hall.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks.
Next up is Paula Gloversen. Go ahead, Paula.
Yeah, I won't keep you because it's late and it's snowing again. And, um, I guess I, I was, uh. Looking at something, uh, or maybe it was city council. About the snow orders on sidewalks. Everybody's like so pro, pro, pro pathway. I can't even get some of the people near me to, uh, take care of their sidewalks, and so I think our. Our ordinance officer, who I think is a great guy, um, hasn't maybe been able to solve the total noise issue. With the valley or whatever they're calling themselves, um. I just want to, uh, what exactly is the ordinance? I mean, how, how much snow? I mean, because I want you all to be safe, because I went out and salted earlier, uh, even though we only had like an, like an inch. Um, my snow people only come for like an inch and a half. But, um, I choose to salt myself, because it's, I don't like to have to put it down, but I don't want somebody to be. Um, you know, and the kids have to maybe get to the bus. Um, I just wanna cover that. I know that is kind of off topic. But, um, I think it's when we're, we're talking about all these parks, pathways and sidewalks, uh. I don't see people taking care of them here in Scioto Township, where I grew up. All the kids got out and shoveled, period. But people aren't having children, I guess.
Thank you, Paula. Thanks, Paula. Next up is Caroline Altmore. Go ahead, Caroline.
Hey there, everybody. I really hope that you all get home safe, because it is indeed snowing out there. And that's why a couple of us left, because the weather conditions are getting worse, so drive most carefully. Um, I just wanted to say I have never seen this board. I mean, this board complicates issues so much. Simple decisions seem to drag on. Simple conversations drag on for hours. I have never seen a more undecided board. It just is astounding to me. I appreciate, uh, trustee Riser cutting to the chase and saying. A B C, done, yeah, and kinda cut into the chase of it, because dang, I have never seen people like. Massage something to within an inch of its life. It's, and lastly, I just wanna say, thank you very much for your vote to support Murphy. She was really, really, I got a sense of urgency about her. And the folks of, the trustee folks that did not support her, shame on you. And the folks that did support her, congratulations. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Caroline. Anyone else like to speak of public comment? Please raise your zoom hand. There are no hands raised.
I'll do it.
No questions, please.
Yeah, go for it.
Whenever any snow shall fall or drift on or across any sidewalk, it says ant, but that's a typo. The owner or occupant of the lot, building, or other premises adjacent to or abutting upon the sidewalk or bike path. Shall remove such snow or cause the same to be removed within the periods of time here and limited. Number one, snow that has accumulated in or during the nighttime shall be removed by six P M. the following day. Number two, snow falling or drifting during the day shall be removed before noon the following day.
Can I make a comment?
Say how much?
Snow. Our neighbors, uh, Washington County do not do their sidewalks. They haven't done them for three days or whatever. This entire time we've had snow.
I'll contact Jason Fee at the county tomorrow.
Thank you.
Our, our pathway is not clear.
Well, our pathway, we don't have a policy on our pathway, and I would. Yeah. Oh, no, 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 please, no.
You usually comment on that about the clearing of the boundary.
Pathways.
Our pathways.
No pathway?
Yeah.
I mean, the, the pathways are not required. Pathways are not sidewalks, not required to be cleared.
So do we need a sign that says no winter payments?
We should have a sign that says no winter payments.
And I would also say, David, and I remember Alec Jerome bringing this up. You know, we have talked about, like, do we ever want to take that on? Um, I don't, I don't think we have the capacity to, but. I, it'd be nice if.
I told me to last year.
We have a, we have a brush.
We have that brush.
Intermittent.
Intermittent.
I know that.
We still have resources allowed.
Yeah. I would make a motion to adjourn.
Well, of course. Oh, I'm sorry. No, thank you tonight. We did a really great job working together, and it went smooth, and Nikki was wonderful. I mean, it just, yeah, so thank you.
So everyone. I'll should adjourn if anything else.
And at eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty, one.